She's crazy. You got to, you got to film the best looking on here. She's the best looking one here. Can you see her? Whatever. These are state. They have, have a support. The disabled person, they don't want to mess with the disabled person. I love that. There's so many people that I told I was gonna come.
Oh, thanks.
Say hi. Know who they are. What's your name?
Uh, Mickey. Mickey.
You know me?
No, ma'am.
I'm like a swan.
Yeah.
What, what, uh?
Eighteen minutes, Mickey.
Eight. Well, I'm on your feet. Are you thinking this is? Give me. I'm low on air system. I'm Jackie. I'm the one that takes care of the dogs. Yeah, and this is Savior Sue. Actually, I told Denise, I said, Denise come down here. I said, Sophie, I just need my mom here. I said Denise has to take us to New York. She's not.
I'm trying to bring her in.
I'm glad I made her so late. They're telling me I can't. Did I drip her? She's ready to stay. She's got her certification for her service dropped out. She's really, she's really sweet. Well, now you gotta tell Denise you love Jackie.
I am on the television.
I, uh, I watch Champ too. Yeah.
Heard about it. Okay.
I know I wanted to go watch it.
Oh, yeah. I got you, I got you. Nice meeting you too. Likewise, nice meeting you too.
Is Denise coming on?
I'm not for sure.
Call and make tell Jackie I'm up here.
Uh, I'm at the car for my father, I want to call for my wife. Give me one.
I'll check her.
Okay.
I'll say two couple minutes. You think a couple minutes, you think a couple minutes?
Probably gonna give her some of y'all.
I don't think so. Who put my thirty there? Well, they probably just gonna be wild, y'all, a bit. I did that halfway by the way.
I forgot that they hold on right there.
Yeah.
Like he ain't mine.
They started going off here.
Yeah, that's true.
I didn't, I forgot it was right there. I'm on red on it. I wasn't too long. He jumped up like.
And I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna just talk about the battle of yours. Then I go. And I'm gonna talk about my last year. I've been home since like. That part, that part, that's the. Put together this.
You know, they.
Yeah. Tell her, don't be.
I, you know, you know why I can't.
Tell her, don't be doing that.
Because I'm. Because I'm always.
One of us was just, uh. I think the main thing I should say, um. But basically then. That's right. That's right. That's right. She a mother. That's right. That's what I'm saying. No, 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 they have, they have forty million on right now. They, uh. And they have some others. That's it. Yeah.
They actually.
Yeah, okay.
So fifty-five people, thirty-five.
I, I, I'm trying to talk about here, but I, for my city side, first standing. This is fun ever since I can be the donkey where they're going to. These buddies is still a back two feet. Still a one million. I don't know what they have like on there. Well, if it's not.
I'm sorry, I forgot that I was that close. When I walk in the door. I, I forgot that he was right there. I said, oh, he's like, he's like, oh, I'm gonna throw him in.
Probably was so long. But he is. I have. For my, it's a, it's an intervention. You know, I paid a hundred and thirty-four dollars to do that intervention. I gotta make sure that I'm sure it's more than five. Three. Get back here. I gotta get some. We gotta get this one. My pastor. This is very cool. So, um, I work. It's, uh, no, it's actually, uh, uh, a modification that helps. My students reflect. To show moms how to play, the kind of playing. Sound, sound. So like say if, if the child. They don't. Wait for them. Helping them to recognize what they don't, don't need to be the different way. Right, speaking of, looking at them, they act as they say different things. Kind of. Would you want to come to the. So, so this makes. And the Savior Sue. Jackie.
Oh, he says.
Uh, well, we don't have my kids. I had the answer. It's about that. But she didn't. A differentiation. Quick place. Well, I did. All right, so I'm gonna go to the refrigerator. And I carry on. This is her first time to be still here. I just hope that it gets too crazy. Okay, she has been with crackers. The other. So I'm. I got a drink. What are you thinking? This is why I'm. They don't put. Yeah. Any sites that everybody was surprised at. Honestly, this sounds like. Arrow streams. I have her different back. She's gonna be, she's not being trained. So like. Here be putting more. In her statement. Don't be please. Man, I wish we were probably. We'll see. I'll be watching. We go. Well, you know, we're most certain. I would be. You were talking. She's, she's very, very. Well, I'm sure. Um, it's. I've been. I'm like. I'm very. I'm so. Kids embarrasses.
This was every city council meeting. Mayor Sheldon, eight years for purpose. Center of the following resolutions, amended resolutions slash. Realization pandemic impact on health. On health. Just parents. Pregnant, new mothers and their ancestors. We should. Let me say something about that.
I think I should roll my pillow. Let me just read my child. These are more comfortable than the other. This looks nice.
That's a vision. This is. Why they coming down here trying to regain and get our. I'm like, real talk, there's so much money in last year. This is like. Eight hours. But yet. We taking care of last year. It's like we gave fifty thousand. Our. That we still ain't seeing in our. I mean, sixty minutes still can't bring us. You know. You need. All of ourselves.
And then I became a stable like.
I don't have nothing. Also have. That they need to be.
I'm at a two point stone. I figure by the time I've been up right now, they're right here, so. It'd be hard to stop.
Yes. Oh, my God. Oh, so. I didn't remember about you till I saw the sign.
Yes, I got. Time you were okay for. I want that. Because I have all this.
That's not. That's.
Yeah. He didn't. I don't know. And then. When we time. That's something like. I'm. Stay here.
I mean.
See, I'm so. And I'll be still. Did you want to get your wine after? Jim, I took care of. Yes, that. Yes, Lord. I know. Yes, he did. I love you. Love you.
I wish.
Oh, right. I guess. Okay. That's pretty much.
This shit takes this long. This is. This shit takes this long.
The time is now five forty-seven. And this special city council meeting is now being called to order. Roll call, men and clerks.
What's her name? Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Murphy?
Present. Present.
Mr. Murphy, modern. Ms. Murphy Carter?
Present.
Byrne?
Present.
Jack?
Present.
Supporting.
Present.
Seven members present.
We have seven members present. Now we will do the pledge of allegiance. We will ask Ms. Jared Murphy Carter, she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
This Patty today.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's starting out, Patty. She's starting out, Patty.
All right. So now it's time for us to remember those that may have gone on. Does anyone have, uh, someone that they would like to honor at the moment of silence?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Murphy Carter.
Um, yes, um, I would like. A moment.
Board.
Is she going to videotape this whole meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, we have a council member videotaping other council members. This whole meeting, this is ridiculous.
Where's the forum?
Okay, so thank you so much, Ms. Byrne, but I did just hear someone making threats towards me about, um, about something bad was gonna happen. So I, I have nothing to say. Everyone in the room has to write a report. So if you want to go ahead and proceed, go ahead, Mr. Murphy Carter.
I would like, um, to send up a, a moment of silent prayer for the family, uh, um, Lynne Wells. Lynell Wells. And other, um, bereaved families.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Byrne?
I want to send a condolences, my nephew was murdered two nights ago. So that's why I'm upset when I have to come in and have this person do this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Byrne.
I'm not done yet, so thank you. I mean, you need to put being real, I'm not gonna do this. You, we can't make you start that. Let me finish. But all I'm saying, Byrne, when we walked in, you had.
Ms. Byrne, right now we are.
I, you're interrupting me, you're interrupting me.
Let's make sure that we stay.
Uh, excuse me, no, you make sure you stay on path because you weren't when we got here. I would also like to send a condolences for Mrs. Denise Green.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else would like to honor someone that may have transitioned?
All right, saying that, I will use my time to say a special prayer request, uh, not prayer request, excuse me, a special remembrance for Ms. Anita Ford. Ms. Anita Ford. So with that being said, we'll take this time off for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. So now we have our prayer or blessing. And our councilwoman, Ms. Shep, would you take three seconds later?
If all minds are clear. Heavenly Father, we come to you now to first and foremost, thank you for the same time, thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your forgiveness through, yeah, the other day. We ask that you would be with all of those who are suffering, all of those who need comfort in the wake of the loss of a loved one. We ask that you would be with our colleague in her time of need and her family, Lord God, that you will cover them and keep them in comfort, Lord God. We ask that tonight there would be just a little bit more patience and understanding for her, that she needs just a little bit more grace tonight because her family is wounded, Lord God. We also ask that as we gather here today, that we handle city business, that we would hear each other clearly, that the arguments were ceased, that we would be respectful, and that everyone here, their voices would be heard in Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, now it's time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery of disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for this matter. Any person who prevents the peaceful or the conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violent shall be removed from meeting. So now it's time for public speaking.
Hold on, is your pardon required?
This agenda doesn't have any opportunity for requests of changes or additions to the agenda. And, um, I believe that's my point of order. Where to say.
Okay, so I will go ahead and, um, and ask the clerk about that specific part. Um, clerk, um.
Um, as we have done for this meeting, we've posted the specific agenda panels online, and so there's no other general city business. So I think I can take the address that comes around here as well as posted. But ten I.
Madam Chair.
Ms. May.
Madam Chair, I would move that we allow by any other agenda, the city council to have any request, changes, and or additions to the city council agenda, not so.
Okay, so one second, Ms. May, uh, um, let me tell me count.
If I could, Robert's Rules supporter denied, section nine fifteen, states the only business that can be transacted to a special meeting is that which has been specified and called a meeting.
Okay, so, so just for clarity, um, does that mean that the agenda is set and that's why on the special meetings we don't have any change?
That, uh, that is what Robert's Rules says, which I believe means that if a, if council members may wish to consider additional items of business, they would be first have to suspend the rules, uh, to allow for changes to the agenda, which would of course require six votes.
All right, thank you. So, um, so Ms. May, so according to the legal opinion that's in progress.
On the board of Madam Chair, I had the floor after the motion on the floor. I respect your, uh, this, the asked this there second, and if you know, I will appeal to another chair.
That's fine, but per our legal opinion that we just received, according to Robert's Rules, first, we are governed by the Charter Council Rules and Robert's Rules takes precedent.
With information. State law takes precedent over those, and that's the same city attorney who gave you an opinion that you could deliberate outside of a council meeting for a. an opinion that you could deliberate outside of a council meeting for a bad example. So I don't respect your opinion at this time, and so I appeal the review of the ethics. I appeal that the ruling of the other chair.
Mr. May, so that was an improper request of information because it was not asking a question. And so in terms of appealing the ruling of the chair, from which the attorney just read, from our Robert Rule, is followed, which states that your motion is improper. So you appealed the ruling of the chair.
Point of order, Madam Chair, you can talk to the cows come home. You chairing, when you made the decision, I can appeal any decision of the chair. So regardless of how you keep interjecting him in as an authority, the decision is yours whether you ask for a second to the motion. And if you don't ask for a second or refuse to, I'm appealing the decision of the chair.
Well, that is fine, so Mr. May, so don't forget, uh, um, a point of order is supposed to be, um, discussing of breaching the rule, and when we did discuss a lot of breaching the rule.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Mr. May?
In my opinion, you not asking for a second to the motion is a breach of the rules. In my opinion, that's exactly what the appeal is about.
Mr. May, the attorney just read the Robert Rule of order again, this is so everyone to have our understanding.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
The chair?
Point of order.
What, Mr. May, what rule is it?
When I say point of order, all talk should cease and you should ask me specifics, which my point of order, my point of order is that you're not to argue this right now. Proceed to the other, Mr. Ask if there's a second to the appeal that you have, all the time you want to argue it.
Mr. May, I already told you that, um, that I ruled that that's improper, so you can definitely appeal the ruling of the chair.
I've been here in a half hour, I have a point of order.
Mr. May, if you continue to use point of order firmly, you will receive your first warning. What is your point of order, Mr. May?
Point of order, it's not frivolous for you to keep arguing with me as a chair. Your job is to ask if there's a second, as a chair, your job is to ask what's my point of order. Right now, I argue that you're out of order. You won't ask for a second, and you keep arguing with me, you're out of order. And I'm trying to figure out how you're an attorney to warn and remove yourself. Don't turn this meeting into chaos.
Again, Mr. May, Mr. May, your point of order is denied because as the chair of the meeting, the chair has the prerogative to moderate the meeting. And so as I moderate the meeting, I am breaking down what is happening so our guests can have an understanding of what's happening. And so with that being said, now that we, I got a chance to express what I was trying to express as the chair of this meeting, we will go on to your appeal. And I will ask for a second, and we will just move forward, but we must make sure that we allow the chair to share the meeting. So, Mr. May, he put an appeal, he said he appealed the ruling of the chair. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Alright, so it has been. Alright, sir, okay, so it has been. Properly second. And what's on the floor is Mr. May is appealing the ruling of the chair that his, um, that his motion was improper according to Robert's Rule. So go ahead, Mr. May.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I'm appealing that you refused to ask for a second to my motion. I'm not appealing that my motion was improper. I want to make it clear, I'm appealing that you refused to ask for a second to my motion.
Point of order. What is, what is your point?
That is incorrect. He was appealing, um, your ruling that there is no, um, changes to the agenda for a special meeting. That is incorrect.
Thank you. And, um, Mr. May, this is that point of order.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What, what, what is your?
I appeal to that point.
How does she know what his appeal is? It's his appeal.
Okay, thank you so much for that point of order. She know because she was listening to the meeting.
It's his appeal.
Again, it is all the same, it's all.
It's his appeal.
I understand what you're saying, this was the appeal was.
So she should be out of order.
No, she's, no, that's not.
Oh, no. How is she gonna argue what his appeal is? It's his appeal.
Again, uh, again, this is not the same, so point of order denied, and this is where we are.
But you're not gonna deny her point of order. It's a different treatment. It's a different treatment. Deny her point of order because she has no business. Put it out on the floor, point of order on the floor, for his appeal, it's his appeal.
That's right. Mr. May restated something totally different. And so.
He knows what's up here.
Again, I'm seeing clear why that's the point of order. And so this is not that.
What is your point, Ms. Burns? We need to add to the official record keepers, which is the city clerk.
Well, you are. Point of, whatever. Point of order taken, thank you, Ms. Burns, and we will definitely get there. So, here we go. Mr. May changed, uh, excuse me, we don't have the floor. So, Mr. May, he switched up the language of his appeal, and Ms. Worden, she highlighted that. So what we are doing, in all clarity, we will take this to the keeper of the records. So, uh, Madam Clerk, so what exactly did you hear, um, this appeal to be?
My interpretation was one of these who said that Robert's Rules, that special council meeting had no changes, and he said I appealed your ruling.
Okay, okay, so, so for clarity, what, what I ruled that his appeal was improper to Robert's Rule.
Point of order.
He said, uh, uh, Mr. May, Mr. May, we need clarity, so what is your point?
That's what you're supposed to do, start the next. I didn't want to appeal, I made a motion to do changes to agenda, and you denied asking was there a second. That's what I appealed your decision, now to ask if there's a second. You listened to Attorney Kim and you made a decision, you weren't gonna ask for a second on my motion for agenda change. I appealed that decision.
Alright, because that decision was improper to Robert's Rule, so you appealed the rule to Robert's Rule.
Point of order.
We're saying the same thing, but I will write it as you said.
Thank you.
But this was not the initial appeal.
Point of order. Point of order, madam, so this is simple. I'm having to pull, I made a motion. You went through an exercise, did not ask for a second. I'm appealing your decision that you shouldn't ask for a second to the motion. They're saying the same thing, then let's proceed.
So, alright, so I will reduce that for a second. And a second by this one for Carter. So, um, go ahead, Mr. May.
Point of order. The appeal was second by Ms. Murphy Carter. You still haven't asked for a second to my motion, that's what reached in your appeal.
Mr. May, where is the appeal at?
Okay, and then I will proceed. Ms. Lewis, we in a lawsuit right now because of the way you and Attorney Kim and others are conducting the business of this shit. The other day, the, it's ironic that Ms. Worden would be recorded because the meeting was recorded the other day. We talked you into giving her her first warning, and then we was able to talk you into giving her her second warning. Even though she's a political ally of yours, the record is clear from the other day. She had two warnings, and the police chief and nobody escorted her out. You caused a recess without objections, and there was objections from being five of them. Y'all had the police illegally remove me during a so-called recess, and then y'all came back and convened a meeting after it had been broke for a form with Ms. Worden who had been removed making the form, and y'all took their millions of dollars worth of shit. Now here we are, starting a meeting. I'm simply trying to do agenda changes, and the attempt to changes can be in line with the purpose of the meeting. If you listen close to Attorney Kim, he said, you can only have things that was called by the mayor for the purpose of the meeting. He don't know what the proposed agenda is. They might very well be in line with the purpose of the meeting. So what have you really said? Nothing. Cause he don't know what the proposed agenda is in line with the purpose of the meeting. And here you find intuitive, starting chaos here. I want to public the doubt. The way that Herkin Roden, yes, he done. Herkin Roden, Priestley, but damn Louis and Attorney Kim got these rules mixed up and stacked. You won't see five votes. Making her ask for a second. She want vote to be proper. Worden want vote to be proper. Based upon history, Candace Machette want, and Quincy Murphy want. You might have three votes to try to make her ask for a second. Something as basic as a motion made, probably sat in discussion. Simple. You won't see it happen again. You won't get justice here, but we don't get justice in that court, watch.
And thank you, Mr. May. Anyone else want to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns?
You started off this meeting horribly before we called yet to order. You make snarky remarks, you're not a nice one. You're not. You don't know what someone may have been going through before I even sat down in my seat. You will make me disrespectful, my friend. Now since I've been here, the councilperson, the ninth ward is videotaping. You should ask her to place her away her phone. You should, because as you said, you are chairing this meeting, but you want the court. You create a hostile working environment, meeting after meeting after meeting, and this is headed toward a turn into a dumpster fire. It just doesn't. It's your energy that's around this room, and your energy with your colleague in the ninth ward as she videotapes her colleague, which is so disrespectful. I don't know if she wants to watch us reading up here or what, but it's disrespectful. Your job isn't to be a theographer, it's none. She doesn't work for Channel twelve, ABC, NBC, BET, or CNN. And you are allowing this to go on while you are chairing the meeting. So your meeting will end in chaos, as they all do, because you have started it that way. It just real. You two are not the only council people, it isn't a second. It's a double standard. You should know that when you don't know what is going on, to ask the city clerk. The city clerk could have his record keys. Not, because many of us may not, you know, aren't reading and doing things. So we may miss something. The clerk will know and should know where we're at. But each person here is, is, is difficult. You came in talking, just stop. Like you were somewhere before, I gotta do it, keep watching this over a minute. You know? And I'm changing up. You need to stop. Now this meeting was called as a special meeting to handle our, I don't believe this meeting was posted correctly due to the Flint City Charter, section three dash two zero two special meeting. The mayor or any two members of the city council may call a special meeting of the city council upon twenty-four hour notice. So my question is, because it did not get to people who are emailed, it was, it was now at six thirty-six. They didn't receive that time, so are we in an illegal meeting through you two, city charter? Page twenty-seven. So it is okay, because someone posted on social media and other people that this meeting did not have a twenty-four hour notice.
That's incorrect, the meeting was posted publicly on the city's website.
What about the people, what about the people who were to be emailed? Cause I just want to be clear.
The, the section of the city charter that you were referring to, it will give me a second?
Page twenty-seven. Section three dash two zero two, and my time is up.
Alright, anyone else would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Murphy Carter? I echo the sentiments of my colleague in the sixth ward, Councilwoman Burns. This meeting has already, has already started, we haven't even been ten minutes into the meeting. And we have chaos, confusion, and commotion all day. But I'm gonna tell you what's gonna happen tonight, cause see, I'm not here to play. I'm not here to sit up here, um, with your, with, with how you chair unfairly. There's gonna be some issues in here, I can already tell. We gonna have a dumpster fire in here today. Because you got Councilwoman in the ninth ward, she's still, she's still, she is still videoing. She's still videoing. Councilwoman, um, Burns and myself. I don't know what she, I don't know what she thinks, think is gonna happen today, but I'm gonna tell you something. I've, I've worked all day, I'm tired, and I will clown you today. I will do. And you think, uh, Mr. Pfeiffer calls you some names, I will call you some names. And they won't be very nice. So put that on Facebook.
Can we have all this speaking, please? Y'all had a bit of fighting. Alright, so, um, ma'am, understanding this, Mr. May, so, um, we're gonna go ahead.
I still have a minute and, uh, ten seconds left, and I'm gonna continue to speak.
The white people say you're dirty.
So. Councilwoman Lewis. I'm gonna ask that you chair this meeting fairly and consider your other colleagues tonight in this meeting. We are the council members. You don't have to ask Attorney Kim any question. Cause I don't even think he knows what he's talking about. So, I'm just gonna put that there. When there's a motion on the table, your job as the chairperson is to ask for a second. And that's it.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Murphy Carter. Anyone else like to speak on this appeal?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Chat?
Yeah, um, who are you to Attorney Kim? I, I know the appeal was because she didn't ask for a second, but I wanna make sure that, um, I understand what your ruling was, I mean, what, what you said, Robert's Rule was about him wanting to make the changes, can you repeat that again?
Sure, Robert's Rules, section nine, uh, it says, the only business that can be transacted in any special meeting is that which has been specified in the call of the meeting.
Okay, so there was no second part about the only changes that can be made, setting? It doesn't say any changes can be made, correct?
The paragraph goes on to say, this rule, however, does not preclude the consideration of privileged motions or any subsidy or any incidental or other motions that may arise in connection with the transaction of such business or conduct of the meeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else who like to comment on this appeal? Ms. Worden?
I'm gonna uphold, or uphold the ruling we chair because, I think it was named, confirmed by the clerk that there are no changes. Um, well, first was affirmed by the city attorney that there are no changes in this special meeting, and then it was confirmed by the clerk that, um, Mr. May's appeal was indeed, um, that ruling, that there are no changes. So, um, I don't see any chaos here, other than purposely created chaos. Um, we would be probably halfway through the agenda already if it weren't for just this created. Um, we would be probably halfway through the agenda already if it weren't for just this created, um, appeals and rules of order. So, um, I'd like to, we're all tired. We're all tired. Um, so let's just do this thing.
Request information.
What is your request?
Review of this word. Can you really speak for me? I'm not tired. Probably you can speak for me and everybody else. I'm really not tired. Did you know that?
Yeah, you don't have a job, sir. Thank you. So, 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 let's, let's make use of it. So, we, e- e- excuse me. Let, and all, all in, let's make sure we have the form. Because, please, Mr. Mays, one second. Understand, so we're, I'm trying to maintain order in our crowd. So, so please. So please, we need for the audience to make sure that we have the form. If you continue to yell out and you're not at the lectern, then you may receive a warning. And if you receive two, well, well, that's your warning.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
So, with that being said, we need to have everyone with the form. One warning for being disruptive. The second, the second one, we can put you off of being disruptive.
Point of order.
That, that is your...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Mays.
Point of order. I started out with a request information to see what she said to see if you should have warned her about the form. You wouldn't answer that privileged motion. Then I called point of order four or five times. If you continue to be argumentative with the public, which is against our rules. Really, you out ordered three more times in that short period of time. One, when they say point of order, everything should stop. And the chair should say, "What's your point of order?" You shouldn't have time to be argumentative with the public, which is in our council rules. Now, I hate to be, uh, raising the issue of black and white, but when the two white women and the white man said something, you would say that. And then when this word, this is my point of order, that he better get it right. I'm gonna call him order, cause the rules about me to call him point of order.
Where is an appeal?
A- absolutely, and that's where I was going. So, Mr. Mays.
What's your, what was the point?
Well, you said a point of order.
Yeah, I meant a point of order. I got the right to call him too. The rules that any council person can call them black or white, you know what? I'm calling him a point of order.
Your point of order is, is denied.
Okay, I feel the ruling of the chair.
The chair's not finished ruling. Your point of order is denied. You're continuing to use privileged motion to take the floor, and this is your first warning.
I appeal the ruling of the chair on the warning, and I appeal the ruling of the chair that my point of order ain't in order.
No, no, it's all one.
No, it ain't all one. It's gonna be two different appeals.
No, it's all one.
I appeal the ruling of the chair and it's just one. So that's three appeals, man. You ain't gonna flunk my appeal together. Then you're not gonna argue at the black folks and let the white folks get away with it. It's discriminatory. I'm used to it.
Okay, Mr. Mays, Mr. Mays, you don't have the floor. Mr. Mays, you don't have the floor. What is your point?
Can you restate my appeal and tell me what order we gonna argue in?
So, Mr. Mays, you have received an appeal by the chair for abusing privileged motion.
Point of order. Once I appeal, you gotta ask if there's a second.
Mr. Mays, let the chair chair, because you're beginning to become disorderly. You're becoming disorderly and according to this only person subsection of Mr. Mays, that ground should be removed. So as he continues to work with you to stay in the meeting, let the chair chair, because this behavior is disorderly and this grounds could be removed from this meeting if you persist. So, so the... So the appeal, so the chair has noted that Mr. Mays was, he was brought to order and given a warning for abusing privileged motions. All right. And so, is there a second for Mr. Mays' appeal?
Uh, support his appeal.
Okay. Second by Ms. Winfrey Carter. All right, so, so that is the appeal on the floor.
Point of order, Madam Chair. There were three different appeals. One, if I may. One, you said I used point of order wrong. Two, you say you gave me a one. Three, you said I couldn't call somebody to order. Yep.
So, so the chair has the right to rule that improperly, because I called one appeal, excuse me, not one appeal, I gave one ruling, and you ruled on that appeal. You do not have the right to break up the appeal. I mean, you love the judge. You can't do that. It's all one. So we're gonna proceed because it is one. So again, the chair has given you a warning and you...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
You just stated that the appeal was me using a proper point of order, a proper privileged motion. Now you just switched it to a warning?
Again, the chair has given you for the record, Madam clerk, can you please state what the chair stated?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Give this one appeal fine. Point of order. Now, nothing, nothing. I called point of order, you're there just to stop and say, "What's your point?" I just wanna clarify, am I arguing that I used point of order illegally and wrong? Or am I arguing that you gave me your first warning? Or both? That's all I wanna know. And we proceed.
Mr. Mays, you made it abundantly clear that you appealed the ruling of the chair because the chair ruled that because you continue to use, excuse me, to abuse privileged motion, you are receiving your first warning and then you appealed the ruling of the chair. And then Ms. Winfrey Carter seconded that appeal. It is not proper to break down everything to separate appeal. That's wasting the taxpayers' time. And plus, and plus, it's not, it's not proper.
Get my time. You're missing my money.
So with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and put in the discussion. Mr. Mays, go ahead.
Madam Chair, for you to boast that you are educated woman trips me out. Because a point of order is the highest privileged motion. When you got in this word and saying some slick to me and I first hit a request for information to see what she said, cause the people heard. That's what taught them to say something. She said some slick. And I just properly asked, request for information, what did she say? And you never asked, you out ordered one time. Then once you went to being argumentative with that lady in the blue and Mr. Metcalf eased his way up there and said, "Bye."
Point of order. Oh, I thought we were in the first appeal. He already spoke.
Um, so this right here, we're, you know, we're in another appeal.
No, we have to finish out the first appeal, which was the ruling of the chair and then what on?
So, 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 good point, Ms., uh, Ms. Worthing. That's an error on the chair part. Cause I, I did, we went straight to the other appeals and that's on me. Now I hear point of order. Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Madam Chair, um, is she the official record keeper? Why is she sitting down there acting like she the record keeper tonight?
Um, so, city clerk.
She's the video in the meeting.
Okay, so, um, okay, I hear you're point of order.
I mean, I'm just saying.
And again, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
You better shut it down.
Ms., I'm not here to shut anyone down, but I'm here for that. E- e- excuse me. Excuse me. Let's make sure that we have the form. Otherwise, you will receive your first warning. So, as we say, this nine number body. This nine number body.
Point of order, it's over here. It's just...
Yeah, practice equality. I said it. Practice equality.
Um, uh, excuse me, that's your warning. That's your warning.
Chair your meeting.
That's your warning. Uh, would you like to give Mr. Metcalf, would you please remove...
You're interrupting me. Chair your meeting. Chair your meeting.
I appeal the ruling of the chair. Over to you.
According to this only person subsection, the chair has the right to break, to break the order to this meeting. What is your point?
Madam Chair, any council person can call a member to order. And you didn't do it right, though, the white people. But you're on the black.
Mr. Mays, we're not, we're not utilizing our forms to spur racist rap.
Point of order. Point of order.
Mr. Mays, that one of this is gonna be your second warning. So, please, let's not do that. So, Ms. Burns, what is your point?
You have the right to appeal that if anyone to call anyone to order.
I don't, I, I don't. And Ms. Burns, oh, that, that's denied.
And I'm getting a warning too, and I wasn't done. Yes, I wasn't done. According to our council, if you call someone to order, what they're asking for is if you're going to punish one person, you're going to warn them off.
That, that, that is...
I'm not finished. Cause if a rule, they're asking, a rule broke, do you understand that?
Nope.
I'm screaming not to. So when a rule is broken, which the rule was broken, what they're asking is if you're going to punish one person, punish all. Do not, do not chair fairly or evenly according to our council rule. So I did hear the gentleman, and then there was a lady who yelled out, "You did not give them a warning." You did not, but you gave the person over here a warning and then the gentleman over here a warning. You gave them a warning.
They're gonna even record it. That's a standard point of order.
There's no such thing as...
There's a standard. She making up laws. There she going.
The person of the point, well, when that point of order was outboard. So moving on, we are at the appeal for abusing the point of Ms. Worthing, you're right. So because we haven't already, we haven't already started that appeal, we will continue, um, with the, with initial appeal. Make sure that I'm right. So we had Ms. Winfrey Carter, she seconded the appeal, um, for Mr. Mays abusing the point. So that's coming up, but we're gonna go ahead and we're at the appeal where he said, Mr. Mays, that the chair refused to ask for a second to his motion. So we have, um, council member Mays, um, council member Burns and Winfrey Carter have already spoke. Would anyone else like to speak on that appeal?
Um, yes.
Ms. Murphy.
This appeal for, um, she granted, uh, she ordered, um, having, checking on...
Madam Chair, I take you.
Okay, so, so go ahead.
I'll say that again. Okay, so, you hear, you hear one. You guys called a special meeting. And when you look at the, um, agenda, there's no agenda changes on the agenda. We have had special meetings that was called by Councilwoman Burns and Eric Mays and Eric Mays and, um, Jamie Winfrey Carter. I think we had two meetings to deal with Oprah funding. And we had those two meetings, people didn't show up, the administration might have shown up, but was not engaged in the process. We had two council members that was part of a path hall committee that could have called a meeting to deal with Oprah funding. Here we are today at a special meeting that was called by the mayor administration to deal with Oprah resolutions with specific, um, resolutions. Now, I've been on the phone with them and tried to talk to them prior to today and told them, gave them my recommendations, a list of resolutions, the people that I would like to see being funded, because there are not, there, people been calling us about their application, where they at, where we staying on their application, and we didn't know. But today, a resolution is being brought to us.
Point of order.
What's your point?
There was a swear word coming out of the audience. Um, it's quite slightly, but it was present.
I did hear. So, audience, let's refrain from yelling out, so we all can get the answers that we're coming for. Go ahead.
So, my colleague in the first ward wanted to move to add whatever he wanted to discuss on agenda. If I wanted to add a resolution to talk about funding for someone else based on the city attorney, we can't add that on here, because this meeting only deals specifically with these resolutions, which is a problem for me. And then for him to make a motion to move to add agenda changes, I guess in, in the near future, and I knew we should not have special meetings where the special meetings are controlled, that you can't have agenda changes on, that agenda, that should just be a given.
Request information.
What is your request?
Through you, Mr. Murphy.
Oh, Mr., uh, Mays.
Through you to Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy, if you listen close, he's saying that then the changes can be made in line with the purpose.
Okay, so, um, seeing that, that Mr. Murphy had his time to speak of any one of the...
Point of order. Give Mr. Murphy his seconds back. If I interrupted him from their request for information, without doing it, give him ten, twenty seconds or whatever it was. That's what's the problem.
Okay, so for the record, it was two seconds, but I will go to the speaker, Mr. Murphy, did you want you two seconds? Mr. Murphy is all set, so we will move on with the meeting. Um, so does anyone else want to speak on the motion to, on the appeal? And this is the appeal about refusing to ask for a second. All right, so with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and call for the vote.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays, what is your point?
Once you said it was for me using privileged motion wrongly, then you said it was for a warning. Now you say it's for asking for a second.
Mr. Mays, we are dealing with the first appeal. So a yes will overturn the ruling of the chair and a no vote will sustain the ruling of the chair. Roll call, Madam clerk.
Mr. Mays.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I abstained because it was not done.
Burns? Yes.
No. No.
Four yes, two no, one extension. The vote is four yes, two no, one extension, so the ruling of the chair stands. So now we're on to the, to the appeal for, um, regarding Mr. Mays' beautifully points of going to privilege. Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
You called a vote of four yes. I don't count four yes. I count it three yes.
Okay, well, I'll go to the keeper of the record. I heard you say four.
Starting with Worthing, that, well, Ms. Worthing. What was your vote again, Madam Chair?
No.
Okay, vote is three yes, three no, one extension. Okay.
All right, thank you for that correction, Mr. Mays. So, um, it is, the vote is three yes, three no, one extension, so the ruling of the chair stands. So now we're on to the first appeal about, um, the abusing of privileged motion. So go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Madam Chair, not only should you thank me that I can count votes, but you should thank me for trying to... Madam Chair, not only should you thank me that I can count votes, but you should thank me for trying to continue to run this city on a council level for the ninth or tenth year. It's appalling the disrespect that you give me as a senior councilor. It's appalling. It's appalling the way you got a railroad me in front of many witnesses across this country. It's appalling. That it's good to be another than that, and you bending over backwards to condone Ms. Burns' bad play. And we see, I guarantee you the other night, you gave her two warnings, and she said it yes, y'all voted on millions of dollars, and the police should have had her out. Today, you condone points of order. Her talking slick to me, and you ain't warned her to say that yet. And I think I've been nice today. Ain't cussed, nobody cussed and crushed. But I'm trying to prove something, you just started out on the wrong foot. It's ain't flat running, Miss Dunn, I see you. And so everybody is seeing it this time. Louis, if you got the nerve to call a police captain and say you need a ride to council me, cause you scared somebody gonna do something to you. You doing something to other folks. We elected in these seats. We ain't elected in here for you to warn us and talk stuff to us, and let the white folks say something, chest high, black folks maybe. You don't see black and white, I do. That lady, she pressing down, cause I'm saying, this is fact. You out of order, ma'am, and that's your first one. That's your first one.
Everyone, everyone, let, let's make sure that we maintain decorum, to keep decorum.
Point of order.
Yelling out during the meeting.
Point of order.
What, what's your point?
She should have us set her warning, and the white police, that cats should be walking out, because the council rules say, and council members, uh, uh, uh. Now you let people, now that you like her, them men, her behind. I don't know who she thinks she is, I want her removed. I want her warned, I'm warning her, I'm giving you your.
Point of order. That's her second warning.
That's correct.
Uh, cause she, she yelled out. No, no, no. Yes, yes. The chair has not, the chair has not made a ruling.
I see what that.
The chair has not made a ruling. Now, now again, the chair, when more people are yelling out, the chair cannot hear.
Wow.
And so, Mr. Mays, who brought someone to order? Understood, if she's yelling out, I, I heard a voice, I didn't see anything, there's a lecture right here. So, so right now, the council members can't bring people to order, that will only be her first warning, like we gave the other people in the room. And so if this behavior persists, then she will be asked to leave. However, this goes to every single person here. We are all brought, uh, brought to order underneath the same rule. So again, Mr. Mays, brought an audience member to order, there's no, because there's no yelling back and forth, only supposed to be after lecture. Our audience member has been issued a first warning, and they may stay at the meeting unless they continue to be disorderly, and this goes for everyone here. We can't get down to business if we can't have any order within the audience, you know, you all are emotional, your time to speak is coming up. So let's make sure that we're in order. Okay, Mr. Mays?
Madam Chair, we have limited time, and I'm making a point with her, because she ain't immune. I don't care if you're black, white, young, old, you ain't immune. And she trying to criticize how we do business, and she just bringing this much hell into us. So, that's what I'm doing, I don't care if she still goes, I just wanted to learn something. All of whom were saying something. And I ain't never seen nobody try to control an audience like this. Let the people clap, say what they want, freedom of speech. So ma'am, I'm just making an example of her, with you, God bless.
All right. Anyone else like to speak on this appeal? All right, so, um, seeing that, seeing that there's no one else, I'll go ahead and I'll be the last. To speak on this appeal about Mr. Mays abusing privileged motion, according to our council rules, oh, and I'm reading, I'm gonna start with rule twenty-five, twenty-one. The purpose of a point of order is to correct a breach in the rules when presiding officer does not correct it, or when the presiding officer makes a breach in the rule. The, the point of point of order is not to gain the floor. So, when, so when the purpose motion continues to be abused, and not used for its intent, then you are in violation. And if you continue to violate the rule, you'll be brought to order. Unfortunately, Mr. Mays used several points of orders, not to get clarification, but he used them to illegally obtain the floor. So therefore, as chair, I have to bring him to order, just like I would any other member of the body. And so with that being said, Mr. Mays would issue his first warning. So, if you like to overturn the ruling of the chair, please vote yes. If you would like to uphold the ruling of the chair, saying that Mr. Mays should receive a first warning for abusing privileged motion, then you will vote no. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
No.
It's Louis.
No.
Mr. Murphy?
I abstained.
Chrisley?
No.
Ms. Murphy, Burns?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Chen?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is three yes, four no, one extension.
The vote is three yes, four no, one extension, the ruling of the chair stands. So now we will move on to public speaking. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes.
Name is Alor Nato. Yeah, the seven, seven, the seven fifty guys, he's living the street up. What a bitch you not do, watching this, waiting here, man.
Yes, oh, oh, but Mr. Mays, please hold, yes, Ms. Chrisley?
Uh, we can't hear the speaker, even through the mic, the microphone. Um, Madam Clerk, could you restart this time, so we can keep getting him?
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Chrisley. And so again, we're going, we're asking for the, um, members of the audience to keep your volume at a minimum, because we can hear a lot, we hear a lot of back, you know, feedback from here, so thank you so much, go ahead, Ms. Chrisley.
Like I say, my name is Alor Nato, seven fifty nine, he's living the street up. And for the peoples who are out in other countries, listening to this situation in Flint, uh, I would just know, thank you for finding my address, before you can put some money in my mailbox, and I'm special, uh, Shaw, the money you gave me, to learn the other peoples, how to do that like you did, please, thank you. And, uh, and that's, and now, to you, Madam Chair, we'll take care of the rest of the business. To you, my, my councilman, Murphy, uh, Mr. Murphy, uh, you didn't take care of that package deal, last time, when, before they broke up the form, and the peoples ran out of here, it cost a hundred and ninety-five houses, uh, and without income tax, and you, I think they in the building now, and the school teacher trying to break it up, but jumping on, or be filming, making filming that stuff over there, like, like the girl that's southwestern. Had a little fight, and the teacher got in the way, got hit by a chair, she was getting bullied, you know, the teacher act like she, she, she is the tiger. Southwestern, right down the street where I graduated from. They did the same thing when I was in, from June, before I got to graduate, they started a riot down there, always trying to keep a doctor from, by westerning, taking over this city, don't want no doctors to be, everybody knows this by now, peoples in other countries know this by now. Don't want no doctor to run, to run the city of Flint, but, anyway, so you got that line, well, you can just, you can tell, if they offer me a god, that they just want to be generous, trying to, trying to put, plant peoples in a drink bag, or act like they don't know how to run the city. And build three projects at the same time, like first the real house, and the room center, and, and what's up, another, yeah, the other one, and you know, the mountain, open the river. Oh, messing up the water, breaking up pipes on purpose, like they do in the Middle East. The brother gets brothers running, turning camp, and all that junk, and the, and the hostages getting in the way, for they wanna get jazz, and all that stuff, and, and all that, and, and priestly nephew showing his rifle, there he is over there, get it again, over there, I'm walking over there pointing my, watch this. Almost stepped on the bulldog, they might wreck that up, yeah. The school hit the bulldog, and the bulldog got more sense than, than the school teacher. And she keeping them, you know, cronies from coming, and then when she gonna take it up, trust my, take it up for the school, and, and I mean, move this again. My boy, hey, hey, to you, to me, I get you, miss, you started to stuff Dr. Fields, who you know, all that, that doctor on your neck. Take your early ice bill, and get away, I'm gonna get your black hand off my back, and then, they got away with the stuff that you exist, none of us, my track.
Um, that is, um, thank you. Madam Chair, that comes to you for duty. Officer, please, yeah, you have me hard.
The next speaker is.
What's the use of it?
Shereen Stapleton?
Yes, yes, yes. In Lua. Tell them who actually is.
Hi, um, I'll be speaking on behalf of Shereen, I believe, for our board meeting. My name is Alana Turner, and I just wanted to speak, um, as a mother who would benefit from the R X Kids program. Um, the first year of life for children is a crucial time in development, and a really stressful time for mothers. So I just wanted to say that the program would help relieve some of the financial stress and burden for mothers in that time, and bring the focus back to just raising healthy and happy children in Flint. Flint could be one of the, well, the first city in our country to do something like this for mothers in their city and in the country. So I think we could lead the way, and set an example for the rest of the country, and, um, um, bring this to the United States. It's already something that other countries do for their mothers, Germany, France, Denmark, so we could.
Oh, yeah.
In the USA, to do something like this for our mothers, and support them in this way, thank you.
There's someone else, the British is coming in.
I cannot think of the person's name, they didn't print their names, they signed it, and you all, this is.
They still have to read.
Dan, that cannot solve this right. The third person that signed up, okay, you're, that, I can't read. Next speaker is Chris Dardner.
Madam Chair, um, they and I are supposed to see the time, okay, so you'll go ahead and keep them aware of their time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chris Dardner, um, seventh ward, I'm not asking you. Okay, I know this isn't gonna do any good, but it'll make me feel better. It doesn't do any good to y'all have the YouTube broadcast. So, first ward councilman. Um, uh, he likes to call people mays, the five fam. Well, there's also a group called the Three Musketeers here. You know who you are, and everyone else knows too, it is very transparent. First council, uh, first, uh, ward councilman, you purposely hate Dr. Lewis, and your other two musk, musketeers go along with you. Things aren't going to get any better until you are no longer on council. That is not going to happen until someone in the first ward steps up and wins the seat. I'm asking for someone to step up, please. First councilman, first councilman, ward councilman.
Uh, 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 please, hold your sign, please. Um, Mr. Mays, we have, uh, a lot of law disruption in that back area, so if we could please make sure that we're giving our speaker at the length of respect. Thank you.
First, first ward councilman, you interrupt others, and if someone interrupts you, you go off. The other night, when everyone, but five people left, they were able to accomplish months of business. What does that tell you? It tells you that three people are the problem. Dr. Lewis, I hope that you won't let those that are the problem drive you off like they did Ally. If this city is gonna going to move forward, someone has to go, and I think people know who that is. We are cur, we are paying you, you shouldn't get paid for meetings that don't accomplish anything. And we wouldn't be at this point if first ward councilman hadn't started problems when you first started. I'm sorry, but neither that, I can't yell at the television, so I feel better now, thank you.
And, uh, you can make that speaker. So, so for the record, you have to sign up to speak, and you sign up before the meeting, and so the clerk is calling people, uh, as they signed up.
The next speaker is Jan Marie Arba.
Jan Marie Arba, seventh ward resident. First off, before addressing Arba, I would like to speak to the following. Chair Lewis, you missed an opportunity where Chris actually should have received her first warning, you instead participated, where she made a statement about public speaking. Instead of you reprimanding her, you co-signed what she said. She should have received a second warning per, uh, Mr. Eric Mays. Secondly, as it regards the young woman who spoke to, um, uh, Flint's effort with helping pregnant women, this is not the first city. New York City has been working at this, and have, um, a couple of other major cities, so Flint would be an additional city. As it regards Ally Huckinroder, the narrative, of course, is that Eric Mays and other ran her off. I believe a better job with the state ran her off. She received an additional sixty thousand plus. Don't forget, she campaigned to work on broadband. She came to council to build up her bona fides, so get it straight, Chris. Next, priority garbage contract. This is a very important matter that you all will vote on very soon. I hope that you will all meet with your constituents, find out what your residents want. Uh, councilwoman Mushani has agreed to, uh, speak and address the public on November third, five thirty, at the Brenner Senior Center. Everyone, of course, in the seventh ward is welcome and expected to attend, but we extend that to everyone in the city of Flint. If you have any questions, council, if you can be there, please be there, because we do have questions. This is very important, we know we can't be taxed, those of us who are homeowners, any further, but an assessment fee is just another word for tax. This is very important, we need to know what the assessment fee will be, we also need to know why five years instead of three years, and there are many other questions that need to be addressed. Next item. Arba, going through the attachment, those of you who might have received the information on phone will notice that there are on your tablet or laptop, that there are resolution uh, specificities attached to the agenda, they're not attached on the paper that we received back there. Going through the one, uh, as it relates to the neighborhood engagement hub, that's two, three, zero, three, one, zero. I noticed that as it regards ward seven, now first of all, I want to say I'm laughing, every ward. Every ward is getting at least fifty thousand dollars plus, uh, ten thousand, I believe it is, uh, per council to address Flint. However, I did notice in Ward Seven, Councilwoman Mushani, that a certain part of the Seventh Ward is not receiving any assistance. And that's the black area. Thank you.
While I'm up here, I'm gonna ask that nobody to approach me from the back. She's being trained to have my back. Thank you. Okay, so I want to start this off with an apology for me yelling. Uh, I should have gotten a warning and I did not. Second thing I want to address is the, uh, the funds to go to the Disability Act, the Arba funds and to go to HEMAT, um, other funds to help the low-income people. I went to HEMAT for humanity about a month ago. I was told that they were probably the only organization that would probably be able to help me and porch. But it would take two years. I don't know why. That needs to be looked into. The other thing I want to address is Eva, you throw jabs at Eric Mays. I heard it tonight. Stop it. I have heard jabs from other council people to other council people. Knock it off. You know what? We citizens of Flint are getting darn tired of this crap. We're tired. We went through the water crisis. We pulled together over the water crisis. Why in God's name can't you people pull it together? I'm just sick of it. You know, here I am, I am in so much pain tonight. But I come up here to pretty much tell you all, knock it off. And with regard, I apologize for yelling out at you when you were going off. But you know what? I'm tired. I'm tired of the jabs. I'm tired of the yelling and screaming at each other. I'm tired of being saying this black and white. It's rich and poor. And we are a poor community and we are being screwed. You all is a mad dog and pull it together. If anybody knows how you get my damn porch fixed, please let me know.
Thank you.
Next speaker is James Moore.
James Moore, resident of the city of Flint, you know. I saved it from, I said, I said, I said, I said. You know, what I'm gonna say, we really don't need any trouble. But Dennis Stannenoff, damn kid, you're supposed to be out of Flint. You're a leadership. You see what's going on. If they're not gonna give the money and go to the right places to fix these people's roofs and porches and sidewalks and driveways, hell, take it back.
Don't give them that money at all.
Um, Madam, my first next speaker, please. The next speaker is. Not a Macintyre.
I think she left.
Next speaker is Mary Wright. Mary Wright.
Hi, I'm Mary Wright. I reside at two, two, eight West Patterson in Flint. I think Dr. Lewis is my, uh, councilperson. I don't know if this has ever seen or heard anything, uh, since I've been switching around. I have a leaking roof. As someone that's seen here before, there are several people with tarts all over their roofs. And while y'all trying to decide what y'all gonna do with the money that's been presented to our city for the community to fix up the houses, y'all bickering about the different organizations y'all gonna get the money to that don't even need it. Y'all want residents, the residents gonna be gone if we can't keep houses and roofs over our head. People roofs caving in, porches caving in and can't get in their house or out of their house. We need some help. Y'all need to get it together and figure out where this money's supposed to go and put it where it's supposed to go. Just trying to figure out how to put it in whoever pocket and whoever try to get, whatever part they trying to get out of what's left and whoever they decide, whatever organization they decide to give it to, they gonna get a piece of it. Forget all that and put the money where it need to go. We need our stuff taken care of in this city. And that's y'all's job. Y'all need to do y'all's job.
Next public speaker. Next speaker is A.C. Dumus.
My name is A.C. Dumus and I live in the Second Ward. And I concur with most of the comments which I've heard. When, especially the lady just left. You know, uh, while you all are trying your best to give this money to organizations, the city of Flint residents, the taxpayer are being ignored. I have no, I have no, nothing against the, the kids, uh, program, nothing at all. I got four grandbabies, so you know, I love kids. But the problem I have that they want a million dollars of opera fund to fund the program. Now, they got money. They want additional million dollars to fund the program. That reminds me of the water crisis. You see all those beautiful buildings that got built right over by the, the stretchway for our children? The wider children, uh, children of the water. But those people that come there are from all over the state. It wasn't built for the children of the city of Flint. Someone must, well, let me get this so I won't get off time. Bursen Field House, Capitol Improv. I love Bursen. But I don't see no dollar amount for Bursen, for the gap. I don't see it. I see they dead here. But again, let me stay here, since I'm in trouble. They're working down on Bursen. You all seen it. Not one black contractor. Out of all that, millions and millions and millions of dollars, not one black contractor. Not one black subcontractor doing any of the work. And we have black folk up here on the council. That's okay. It's not okay. Now, let me get to this one right here. Here's another one. Uh, two, three, zero, eight, eight. Gap. No amount in there. Again, no amount. That's one of those to be determined, I guess. There's a whole bunch of to be, to be determined in this opera fund. I would suggest that if you're not gonna vote for roofs and, and windows and porches and all like that, don't vote for it. Vote for the people. The, the shack? Vote for the people. And see, you gotta have a house and you have to live in a house in order to vote for some of this stuff. Folks, some folk vote up here don't even leave, don't live in a apartment.
Oh, no, live in the city? Oh, shit.
Is it? It is now. Oh, you're interrupting me. I have a real second.
Yeah, she tell me.
Speaker, any others who'd like to speak?
There we go.
It's a shame you guys. I don't care about you not getting along. But this city has been nothing. Like she said, roofs, porch. It's caving in. And a lot of y'all don't care that it's caving in. You know, you've been hollering out, where we gonna get the money from? All this money that you giving to everybody else? It's for the people. It's not the, all this other garbage. It's for us. And when certain people tell you how it is, like y'all got your hands down, like you're not interested. You know? Well, I bet you got your fifty thousand dollars on this. I bet you got your trick or treat candy. You know, fifteen hundred. You know, you don't care. But quickly said, if somebody come to me, I'm gonna work a deal with them. You sold, you sold your soul to give Aspen Capital seventy-two mils that we have to pay back. Now, how's it sound? Then you gonna go put the garbage can. I don't need no garbage can, I go to dumpster. That's what you actually nothing do anyway to get the free garbage can. They're not free. They're not free. And you guys gonna wake it up and, and miss, uh, the fifty candy teacher, Lord have mercy. She's a trip. You know, you don't tell Eric, you don't have a job. You don't need it. Cause you ain't doing nothing with it. You ain't teaching, you teaching our black kids to be what? Stupid? Cause I ain't think nothing you can be teaching with the attitude that you have against us black folks. I don't even see how they still get you at the school, like you say. Your husband left you when you was pregnant. That's what I told you, he should have left your ass.
Oh, so, uh, so, so, sir, sir, wait a second. Madam, sir. Next speaker is Alana Turner.
Who?
Alana Turner. Next speaker is K'wana Mack. Is it Alana Turner? No. It's K'wana.
Hello, my name is K'wana Mack. I reside in the Seventh Ward. And I'm gonna be completely correct tonight cause I don't wanna get caught. Oh, let me get this, resolution, two, three, zero, three, nine, zero. This is about the funds going to different, uh, agencies. Disability Network, Electoral, Advocates Card. Now, this should have said, well, let me check that. We fill out applications for things we needed during on our houses back in March, April. They should give those applications to these different agencies. But we're finding out you gotta call the agencies and get back on the list or what have you. And then they keep saying, if you decide it, it's cosmetic. See, they making their own qualifications and requirements for us to get this money. So that needs to be changed. And I would like to say, uh, I'm in the board, Ms. Mushani. And, uh, you watching the clock. The man was talking to you, maybe you respecting the look at him. You don't act like you engaged. You know what I'm saying? But, um, also, what I missed was, when Ms. Eva said, you don't have a job to Eric Mays, you talk, don't get it. You didn't get that warning. When this lady, Chris, yelled out, she didn't get that warning. She wants all the respect given to her, but she don't get no respect. So, like I said, there's gonna be one good one. Mushani, Lewis. Rest in peace, my dear. Cause I'm gonna be dead behind you. All right?
Adele over there helping to sign the papers. That's Adele over there. He didn't sign his papers, so she helped him get his papers signed. I look at, she gave the paper to him. He didn't sign his paper.
Hi, I'm Sandra Jones. I'm in the Eighth Board. But today, I'm representing the R.L. Jones Community Outreach Center on the campus of Greater Holy Temple Church of God and Christ. I have stood before this council on several patients in regards to the water crisis, then again for COVID. And I want to thank the council for originally awarding the three health centers in this city who have been faithful since twenty sixteen to this city. I have sat here from five thirty until now. We only began business just a little bit ago. It's unfair to those of us who work for you all in council or the city of Flint and have to hear the bickering and the fighting among you. I'm not saying that what you're doing is invalid. That's not my point. But that's not what I came here for. I came here because when we had the water crisis, our site was open every day. When COVID hit, the R.L. Jones Community Outreach Center on the campus of Greater Holy Temple never closed its doors. Many of you work from home. But we knocked on the doors of the residence delivering food, water, and personal care items. And I don't see our resolution for application anywhere on here. This is unthinkable. And then when we apply for funding from the local funders and so forth, we're told, Mother Jones, we have told you to change the way you do business. We don't fund basic needs. So for social determinants of health, let's go there. For those who could not get out or had COVID or had relatives that had COVID, we went and knocked on your doors and took your food to you. Today, we service and deliver to more than twelve hundred and fifty households food, beautiful food, excellent food, wonderful, personal care items to seniors who need them. But I don't see our name anywhere on here. I'm not on payroll. You can ask, you're not equate. I know my time is up, but I have worked in this city for free. I have given up my time and so have our employees. And I'm asking you to change this? I want to see R.L. Jones application on the next time you come together or have a special meeting. Because we deserve it and the people in this city deserve it. I know my time is up, but these people need to know the work that we have done in this city and everybody was sitting at home during COVID.
The next speaker is Rich Jones.
How y'all doing tonight? My name is, uh, Rich Jones and, uh... I wish y'all could change y'all time. I wish y'all could change y'all time to where maybe y'all could address the community for ten minutes instead of three. And when y'all have y'all appeals, maybe y'all could have two rounds of two or three minutes instead of two rounds of five. Maybe we could, you know, get a little bit more, uh, community output. I know it's a lot, just like today, I'm speaker number seventeen, this hour, if y'all address seventeen people in two minutes. Basically impossible, just as impossible it is for the audience to sit down and be quiet. It's very hard for us to sit down and be quiet and listen to all of this, very hard. And my suggestion would be, maybe you should just let them say what they say and just keep moving like they, like, like y'all, y'all adore a lot of people, y'all do a lot of ignoring when y'all want to. Ignore the audience a little bit, just keep y'all moving. And just think about the residents sometime. I see, I hear a lot of personal opinions. I mean, sometime, we can get up here and it'll be a hundred people, and they all talk about something different. But then y'all wanna address personal attacks, how people are treating y'all, what faces they have on shirts and... Y'all are not up here to please yourselves, y'all are up here to please the people. It real simple, and if y'all put the people first, y'all will be alright. It's just that simple. But I understand y'all agenda and y'all obligations. It's very clear that y'all have an agenda and y'all have obligations. The people don't like y'all agenda, and they ain't for y'all agenda. And y'all can continue to watch people come up here and ask y'all for certain stuff, like I asked y'all, look for different places, use y'all talents to bring money in, to help the residents. This is a such thing as testifying for a homeowner. That's something y'all should be looking into, instead of taking people home. Real talk, it's a lot of ways that y'all have talents, but y'all are not using y'all talents to help the people. Thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Chair. The next speaker is Trevor Barryhill.
Good evening, council, I'm Trevor Barryhill, from, uh, fifth ward. A few things I've seen in your agenda here, and it's been said by someone else. You've got two pieces on your agenda that have no dollar amount. I'd like to see that put aside until a dollar amount can actually be put to it. Spending money that you don't know what the annual overall dollar amount's gonna be, kinda seems dumb to me. I mean, they don't sign a blank check and give it to your, uh, utility company. Next part would be for the renting of the Clive Road property. You don't say how long you're gonna be here and how long that's gonna, or how long that bill's gonna come out of our, uh, city budget. First off, it'll be in the city as it says. That's concerning, cause that comes out of our pockets, yours included. I'm not gonna pay for something that I don't know what the final price point is. I hope you have a sense of the same. Finally, your medical secretary downstairs. I picked up Michigan State Police legal update, MCL seven-five-zero-two-three-four-D, provides that it is a ninety-day misdemeanor to possess a firearm on premises of the following quarter. Okay, you guys are on step one, congratulations. This section does not apply to the following. We can ignore security guard, we could ignore peace officer, I'm not one of those. A person with a valid concealed pistol license. I had to make a choice tonight whether I wanted to speak to you or feel safe. Tonight, I chose to speak to you. I don't think anyone should have to choose one rank over another. Thank you.
Alright, may I consider that we don't have any more public speakers, correct, Madam Chair? Alright, we'll move on to council comment. Anyone else would like to comment?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns.
I would thank all the speakers for your time, and even those who gave constructive criticism, although I may disagree. It's the time to come and to speak to us. Um, Mother Jones, I've worked out there, I work people, no end. I've been out there at your center, and your work is continuous. You show up, there are no sick days, there just aren't. And you run a fine oil machine. I mean, you, you work people, cause I've worked out there with you. And you get it done. There are too many organizations that are on here that, that are not, the money's not getting to where I see the people need it. Jackie, I need to talk to you about getting, uh, of course, there are organizations that will help with that. Um, we have good churches not getting anything, Pastor Hicks Church isn't getting anything, the R.L. Jones Center isn't getting anything, but we have a, a councilperson, second ward, she's on here getting fifty thousand dollars tonight. We haven't done anything for residents, kept on one roof, one porch, one window, one anything, furnace, but we're taking care of our council members. I'm proud of that. I would not plan taking care of council first, I won't do that. When you have a nonprofit that rich that in your name didn't disclose council that they have, that's a problem. There should've been a conflict of interest, but this councilperson did change it a month ago, took her name off as director and as president. If everything was kosher, why would you change it? You don't do that. I'm gonna take care of the residents first, cause that's what we're here for. And if you wanna know what's holding up our, it's because it's going to some people, should be getting it in the first place. What's right and bad, this is, I've been going through these, there are some, some problems with some of these, and they're gonna have to be separated.
That clock just stopped.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, anyone else would like to respond, their councilor's comments? And Ms. Priestley?
I have a chair.
Ms. Murphy, go ahead.
Yes, um, so, Mother Jones, and I just, I just spoke to you. Um, there have been no resolutions brought forward from administration in regards to, um, healthy food access, or, um, whatever the grant category it was under, not yet. Um, those are coming. I don't know which ones will be coming forward or not, but we do have the ability to make amendments. So, don't give up hope, and you can go ahead and push the administration to bring resolutions forward on that. Um, and, and Jackie, I think you're in fourth ward, don't you? No, okay.
I'm in five firsts.
Okay, um, so, in regards to your, 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 I'm sorry, we can't get you back to back and forth, but, um... In regards to your porch repair, I don't know if the disability network can help you.
They're a joke.
But, um, I, I, all I know is that, I suspect that the, I suspect that contracts haven't been signed yet with the, um, Habitat Humanity and, and the other whole repair. That does take some time to what those details.
Two years?
So, anyways, um, that's what I have, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Alright, anyone else would like to comment, their councilor's response?
Madam Chair.
Hold on, it was Mr. Murphy first. Okay, Ms. Murphy, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, um, Mr. Murphy. Um, first, I would like to thank all of the public speakers, thank you for bringing your insight, your, um, comments, your opinions. Um, thank you for being engaged in the process. I do wanna say, um, Ms. Jackie Burns, um, I hear and I, um, echo your sentiments. I am tired of it myself. It's a lot, but it's a lot going on in this city, it's a lot in different parts. And while you guys sit out there and you see us, just know that under all of this, it's a lot of stuff going on. So, you got the, the back and forth. We, we, we have, um, a mayor. I don't even know why he called this meeting, because several of these resolutions on this, um, agenda tonight, we sent back to, um, fin, to the finance department. We have not yet had a working meeting, okay? So, where is it? Right, so, so, so there you go. So that's what the fight is about. I'm for the people. I see that he did send a resolution to increase home improvements by what? Was it, um, uh, one billion dollars? But one, one million dollars, that's still not enough, it's not enough. So, I'm on.
So, anyone else would like to comment, their public comment? Okay.
Yes. So, I, I heard a couple, thank you all the speakers who spoke. I heard, um, I wanna speak on the gap financing of residential mixed-use projects. Um, I think a couple of speakers talked on, I think it's resolution two-three-zero-three-eight-eight, our funds gap financing. So we got the, um, breakdown of the gap financing, and one of them is a hundred thousand for May instant to renovate five transitional homes. The other one is communities first, affordable housing, seven-sixteen South Run track is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The other one is for Habitat Humanity Court, um, Savannah Court, um, Home Project, a hundred and fifty thousand. The other one is for YMCA fifty residential units, two hundred thousand. McFarlane, eight hundred, East Court, a hundred and fifty thousand. McFarlane again, seven hundred, East Court Street, a hundred and fifty thousand. Sacred Heart Village, which is a tiny homes on Stewart and Saginaw, five hundred thousand. Hispanic Technology Center, Early Child Home Center, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, those dollar amounts is reflected in this resolution right here. And then I wanna, um, also, in fifteen seconds, um, make it very clear. I supported Ashley Capital, the development, and I still support them, and I'm appreciative, and I am glad that they chose to submit a plan and to throw in more to develop.
Alright, so, thank you so much, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank all of the speakers and the people who came out. But guess what I'm gonna say? Why'd it turn into a false alarm? And what I mean by false alarm, this is the third or fourth special meeting for our board. I called two or three of them, folks didn't show up. The folks who didn't show up when the mayor called it, they show up, but he don't show up. How you gonna work on thirty to fifty million, call the meeting, and you don't show up for your own meeting? That's rude. Ms. Burns, I can appreciate you, cause I'm gonna talk black, white, Democrat, Republican, but my heart is saying something else. And I don't care if it's either word, that Quincy Murphy or whatever, but, you know, when they act a certain way, I'm acting a certain way with it. You got it, the black folks, it the white folks, it the Democrats, it the Republicans. And when we can't have that conversation, we got a problem. I fought all my life for civil rights, and Ms. Burns, according to Emily, she said I ain't got a job. I worked thirty years for General Motors. I got the right to retire and then still do work, but I'm here. I've been in council meetings for over thirty, forty years, didn't know who even where it was. I pop into the tent for a council meeting as a councilperson, and she have as a councilperson, cause she asked. So, sometime, you have to speak on it. And I know it upset people when I talk like that, but we gonna continue to fight for civil rights, and just as I am till I die. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Sh.
Yes, just wanna thank everyone for coming tonight. I do wanna clear up something, I think someone accidentally misspoke. I didn't agree to speak at the seventh ward meeting, I called the seventh ward meeting. And the reason that it's a seventh ward meeting is because I cannot call meetings on behalf of my colleagues. And so, they, they, they can call meetings in their wards for their residents. I am not the mayor, I am not a councilperson at large, I can only call meetings for the seventh ward. I, I see you shaking your head, but I am clear on the fact that I called.
You're lying, you're lying.
I am right, excuse me. Where's the warning?
Ms. Johnson, um, Miss Henry, please.
Correct, the warning.
So, thank you, thank God, we wanna be fair, that's your warning.
Wow.
So, go ahead.
As I was saying, I cannot call council meetings, I can't call ward meetings on behalf of any ward other than the seventh ward. So that is why it is a seventh ward meeting. I am sure that my colleagues in all of the other wards, if they would like to call a ward meeting for their residents, they can. I was not trying to offend any of my colleagues by trying to say, oh, everybody come to this meeting, which is why it is a seventh ward meeting. So I just wanted to clarify why it is a seventh ward meeting that I called, thank you.
You did not call it, that was second round of seven, you were invited.
Oh, so, Ms. Murphy, please. Alright, so we are on, um, council response, so anyone else would like to respond to the, to the residents? Alright, seeing that we have no one else to respond, uh, I'm gonna take my time. Um, we are, we are definitely happy to see each and every one of you that came. Democracy matters, your voice matters. And tonight, we have the option to vote resolutions into existence or to, uh, or to tell. We're here for that, so I'm glad that, um, we have colleagues that are, um, willing to vote, not abstain. Last, our meeting that we had, unfortunately, uh, we were not made aware of in the time and fashion. And so, I was not able to attend, I was out of town. And so, but I was just out of town, out of town, starting with the lead of women voters. And we were working on, on policy that we wanna advocate for and last, so, even though when I'm not here, I'm still doing the work. Um, yes, and I am, um, excited that we are able to bring proposals to the north side. I hear, um, a colleague speak about the Sarus Park Neighborhood Associations, which was the neighborhood associations created to aid the second ward, specifically the north side. Because that area has been neglected for so long, so I'm proud to have founded that. I'm proud to bring that to my neighborhood. But the great part is, I, when, when you, when people are more focused on witch hunt and accusing, and trying to find fault, instead of starting a neighborhood association or helping the residents start a neighborhood association, we get the finger pointing. So, we were able to, but when I saw that it was a problem, I've been busy doing the work. And we went ahead, and we switched it on paper, because they already been switched, um, in, in action indeed. So, the president, Michelle McDonald, she submitted a grant, so Sarus Park can continue to build on the north side in collaboration with the Neighborhood Engagement Hub. So we wanna stand on the truth here. So, I would like to thank every single one of you all for being engaged, and that's my... And, and that's my time. So, we're gonna get ahead and move on to the, to the agenda. Uh, e- excuse me. Uh, e- excuse me, no speaking out, yelling out, unless you're at the lecture. I don't know who it was, but I hear that that disrupted the meeting. So, as we proceed, we're gonna move, move ahead with this meeting. And next on the agenda. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on with the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Worthing.
I move resolution two-three-zero-two-eight-one-point-one for approval.
Uh, uh, Mr. May.
Point of order. We on the consent agenda, I guess she's making a motion for the consent agenda, rather than a separation, does she understand? I beg to try and entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. May.
I was just anxious to get to business, so I misspoke, um, I move the consent agenda for approval.
Okay, with, with, um, any separation?
Madam Chair, point of order.
Um, Ms. Worthing, any separation?
Point of order.
Um, Mr. Ray.
There is a motion for the consent agenda, you asked if there is second, and then you asked for separation. So.
She don't know the rules.
Okay, so, um, and I was attempting to do that. Um, Ms. Worthing, so, so, um, where we are on the consent agenda, um, you, so you asked to have the consent agenda approved with separations?
Yeah, it needs to be seconded first, then we separate.
Right, 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 correct, so, um, I'm gonna get that there. All right, so now that we have, um, the local floor for the consent agenda, is there a second? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, seeing that Mr. Murphy has seconded that, some Miss Priestley.
I move to separate every item on the agenda.
Wow.
Wow.
Right there, and, uh, a motion to separate everything from the agenda, and it has been, um, seconded by.
Murphy, what you want to do? It needs to be a motion.
Oh, all right.
I just, uh.
All right, cool, not a problem. Thank you for reminding me that, I'm using, I move.
Madam Chair.
Okay, um, so, uh, hold on, hold on a minute. All right, so what we have, we have.
Madam Chair, I separate everything on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so everything.
Everything.
So, everything, Mr. May, please talk. So, everything on the agenda will be separated. So, um, since that is the case, we will move on to resolutions.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, a bunch of these resolutions was voted on and sent back to finance committee meetings. In my opinion, in order to reconsider them, you have to have a suspension of the rules in order to reconsider them, because it was no notice prior to this meeting based upon the rules. The mayor might have other council rules, but he just put stuff on this agenda that's already been voted on and sent to finance committee meeting. It would take six votes to suspend rules, it would take six votes to reconsider, and I just don't think they is. So, you know, even though Miss Priestley separated.
Okay, so, so, Mr. May.
Point of order, don't interrupt me, Mr. May.
Mr. May, you may have made your point, so we want to.
A point of order, that's what a point of order is, it's a major point, you ain't gotta interrupt me to tell me that.
You already made your point, Mr. May.
No, let me finish, can I have that courtesy?
You're talking about Miss Priestley, so.
No, I'm talking to you, you're not interrupting.
No, 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 you're talking about Miss Priestley, so we want to, we want to make sure that. Mr. May, you want to make sure that we.
Madam Chair, you by the order.
Come on.
You by the order, and I want to be your words' point.
Mr. May, go ahead, Ms. May.
I was actually, before you said anything, I called a point of order. His point of order, he took the floor, we can ask Attorney Kim, get what he thinks, but he's out of order.
Right, um, so, correct, so, Mr. May.
I appeal the rule, Madam Chair, you say right, that I'm by order, I was by order.
Mr. May, you about to come on the meeting, uh, we're about to come right back to you, so do you want to waste our time to do that, we can?
I don't know what you and Miss Worthing want to do.
Ooh, where? You, you are taking the floor, you are missing the point of order, but we're trying, Mr. May.
I tried to get the floor two, three times before I called the point of order, you kept putting me on.
Mr. May, the chair, the chair, the chair will acknowledge you to speak on one of the resolutions, but, but you raised a point of order. And your point of order, if that, in terms of, we need to find out if it's legal to have these resolutions on the agenda. I'm doing nothing more besides running and ordering and organizing meetings. So, so let's, let's address your question, your point of order.
Point of order.
So, what is your point?
Madam Chair, I already know the answer. Now, if we can proceed with the meeting, that was my point of order, if you ruled that it's valid, then you could afford that to proceed. I don't have to ask Attorney Kim about this rule, I already just stated.
Mr. May, you don't have the floor, we're on to resolutions, so, so if these resolutions are valid and they are proper, then we will move on to discuss the resolution at hand, so that's what, what we want to do.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What, what, Mr. May, you want to receive a second warning for our view of this plan, so what is your point?
No, I want to skip the floor. I've been asking you to give the floor.
Mr. May, there's no motion on the floor, so you bring that up.
I can make motions if you give me the floor.
Mr. May, put on resolutions.
That's what I can make a motion as to any resolution on you. I'm trying to get the floor.
Go ahead, Mr. May, go, Mr. Kim.
Uh, this may assist the council here, rule six-point-one, this is the matter shall be placed on the agenda of any meeting of the city council by action of the council president or any presiding chair of any committee of the council, or at the request of the mayor or clerk. Uh, the, the resolutions that are on this, the agenda for this special meeting were placed on there at the request of the mayor, and thus, uh, their consideration is within the council rules.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kim, for clarifying that we are in order to have these resolutions.
Madam Chair.
So now, I will, the chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
So, Mr. May, what is your motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move two-three-zero-two-eight-one-point-one, I move that, um, to be in finance committee meeting, and I also move that, well, I, I move it to be in finance committee meeting, we'll take it from there, so.
Okay, so there is, uh, motion to move resolution two-three-zero-two-eight-one, which is the RFPs program, to move it to the finance committee. Is there support?
Support.
Support if I make it, Priestley?
Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. May.
I don't care what Attorney Kim tell you, what you buy into it. If this council vote by the more to move some of the finance committee meeting, just 'cause the mayor draw up an agenda and put it on there, he can't override council votes. He can veto it, and then fix votes that the council overrides his veto, but Attorney Kim is the worst city attorney I've seen since I'm busy. He telling you that the council can vote to move these resolutions to finance committee meeting on a five or more vote, and the mayor the next day can bring them back in a special meeting on an agenda, that's the most poisonous city attorney opinion out of there. The mayor don't run the executive branch and the legislative branch. The council vote means I'm all for this city. These have been voted upon. He can't change council votes, um, by creating an agenda and say, I'm putting this on here, and I will be on ABC twelve news for the council to vote, 'cause I'm overriding. That's ludicrous. And look, you got a city attorney, uh, he managed to put whatever he want on here, and he did, but that don't mean it don't mean reconsideration. That don't mean it have to be voted on again without reconsideration. That don't mean the rules have to be suspended, that's ludicrous. Look at it, I want everybody to look at it. Now, I don't know if you got five votes to move this forward or not, but you ain't got minds. It should be talked about in finance committee meeting. I could see if this is a meeting for all our friends, a working session, and try to get it together. You done got what the city attorney needed, ain't no way it's silent, and then try to bring something back that's been put in committee. That's stupid. I told you, it's a boss of honor. But I'll see what happens. I'll see if five people vote on this tonight. We shouldn't have to go to court to be able to say what the council can do and what the mayor can't do. That's ludicrous. And we shouldn't have to vote twice to send it to committee. You know, in the second round, I might make a amended motion, but I want to talk about it, Mr. By. Well, yeah. Under a duty rules. I'm gonna settle my magical friends for three dollars.
Madam Chair.
All right, Ms. Priestley.
Um, I just would like to, um, point out that there's only one round of three minutes for Mr. May, so if anyone else is busy, that's it.
All right, so, also thank you, did you want the floor?
Um.
Sure. Okay, go ahead.
So, um, in regards to this, I've made my, my feelings known quite well, I could just postpone indefinitely and never see it again. But I don't know that that's the will of my fellow council members, so that's why I'm going to go ahead and vote to, um, send it to committee. But in committee, I made very well vote to postpone indefinitely.
What was the information?
What was?
The, you know, Miss Priestley, wasn't it already voted, I don't need to go to committee?
Yes, it was.
So.
All right.
Thank you.
Very well. Anyone?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthing.
I'm not gonna vote it to committee, um, I think with these, we've had enough time, you know, whether we're gonna vote for it or not. So, um, I, I challenge my colleagues to just vote yes or no. Let's do the work, and constantly postponing these resolutions is not doing the work. Residents want to know if we're going to pass these funds, um, for them. And this goes directly toward, uh, pregnant women and mothers, and I'm gonna vote yes to pass it, but I will vote no to postpone it anymore. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Worthing, anyone else would like to speak?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthing.
Attorney Kim, um, six-point-one states this is agenda for record, rule six-point-one. Matters shall be placed on the agenda of any meeting of the city council by action of the city council president or any presiding chair or the city media of the council, or at the request of the mayor or clerk, prior to the start of meeting. After all, public society officers ask for any additions, and are changed, is that what you were quoting, six-point-one? Because we voted to send some of these items to committee, so if we voted to send them to, because these aren't new items being placed on the agenda, they already had a place, because they had a home temporarily. And so for us to take them out of finance committee, we should, my understanding, to vote to bring them out, because they're not new items, these are not new resolutions, and they were voted on by the council. So if the council voted to send them to committee, we didn't vote to bring them out. And so we have to do a vote six of reconsideration, which would be a vote six, and then to suspend the rules. And I know this council's not suspended any rules, so this does not make sense to me. And I am not in agreement with this, because we voted to send these items to committee, and if we're going to constantly break our own rules, this is a problem. And for, to you, to, uh, you, Madam Chair, to the, uh, city clerk, um, would we have to, to, once this is sent to committee, how do we take it out of committee? Normally, because, you know, in the past, I know you would have definitely voted beforehand.
So, for these particular items, they failed to move to any committees. Four of them were on the last special affairs, which lost the quorum, and then you voted to move certain items to the city council agenda. Four of these items, we didn't move, so they were still in special affairs, they didn't, the votes moving were unfailed.
Where was RFPs placed at, they were, were they in committee?
This is one of them, so when you lost your quorum in the council meeting, you voted on individual thing that was on special affairs that wasn't addressed. This item failed to move to council or anywhere else, the motion to move it to committee failed.
So do any of these items, are they in the proper place, or do we have to, can we vote for them from here, because House Speaker Fixit put a motion for this in the back to committee?
No, 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 motion. They've got, they've got no motion to fail. They didn't move to me.
So can they be on this agenda?
And for this six-point-one.
Okay.
Request information. Point of order.
Oh, what, what, what's the wrong?
My point of order is that all of them ain't the same. Some of them was already moved to committee.
Oh, my goodness. Go, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, two-three-zero-two-eight-one-point-one, three-one-nine, three-two-zero, three-three-four. There were four that were on Monday's special affairs committee that failed to move to council by vote. Three-on-four was on special affairs on, uh, October ninth. And it was the same thing, a motion to postpone finance committee, a motion to cancel. We can't with. Failed to move from nine-one in special affairs. So, and the other four are random. So the six that are in question, all council made motions, but all the motions failed.
Request information, which for, are you referring to?
Um, Monday, we moved two-eight-one-point-one, three-one-nine, two-three-zero, three-one-nine, two-two-zero, three-two-zero, three-three-four.
Three-two-zero, what?
Three-three-four.
Three-three-four, and then it also says, three-zero.
That one failed to move from special affairs on October ninth.
So that don't follow the same category, four and zero. Only them four, only them four.
Oh, okay, okay, so they all had different, but the motions take over on the.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, so, Ms. Priestley, um, you have voted in the first round, was it, May? Any, oh, yep, thank you, anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Murphy?
I think, um, we don't have the votes for, um, this RFPs right now, so sending it back to finance probably would be better. Um, option in order to say, because if you vote now, and you don't have the vote, you got eight of us people here, if five of us don't vote for it tonight, it can just go to fail. And then it'll be just like, um, Councilwoman Judy Priestley said, it'll just be gone indefinitely, and then we'll have to bring it back up. So I think bringing it back to finance, taking it to finance will be safe. I'm done.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak in the first round? Uh, no, we're grounded. Oh, well, seeing that there is none, I will be the last to speak. So we are back here at RFPs, either we gonna vote for it or not, either you want it or you don't, it's fine. So, we just want to vote for it, I'm not going to say it anywhere. Why do you think that finance? Yeah, just everyone just standing and swear, either you are for it or you are not. And so if you are not, vote it down, don't go to the law, 'cause we're playing with them. So, um, so.
Request information.
What, what is your request?
Madam Chair, you out of order, I don't think nobody planned for it, and that ain't the motive that you should be speaking on, you should speak on.
Point of order. Point of order.
What is, what is your point?
Improper taking the, uh, floor, um, and using a point of order to take the floor.
And he did that, so, Mr. May.
Point of order.
What, what is it, Mr. May, okay, it's not valid, it'll be your second warning, go ahead.
It is valid to say that it's a rule that say you can't speak on both voting. And you spoke on our motives of whether we play. And you spoke on our motives of whether we playing with people. You should just speak on what you want to do. And so I call it point of order that you trying to tell everybody based on what we do, we playing with them. That is, we are motivated to play with people.
Okay. I'm going here and, um, and I vote, I'll, I'll give that point of order. But, as I was saying, we can keep sitting in the back like the fifth, sixth Congress, this is bad. Okay, Julie said, "Proud," she, she's my board. I respect Julie. Either she's for it or you're not. Let's go play with it. So, all right, I'll thank you, um, Ms. Priestley. We're just standing on this square. Either you're gonna vote for the pregnant mother in this community. If, either you're gonna vote for us to leverage this small one million, and this turning into fifty-five million. One of the biggest leverages I've ever seen. Probably one of the biggest, the biggest leverage from these dollars that we have so far. Being a mother, I understand how it is. When you are, after you have your child, and you can't work for, for a period of time. I understand that. And so if we are doing this exclusively for Flint mothers, this is income coming exclusively into the city of Flint, I'm gonna vote for fifty-five million dollars to come to the city. If I give you one dollar deal, and you give me a fifty, that is one of the best investments that I've ever made. And so, and so we, we need more. And so, I'm gonna vote for it. Cause either you're with it or you're not. Regardless about, if they apply for the throne, they, I would have to provide a million for this. But through, out of the way, the owners, the people outside of Flint believing in Flint, other people, they are investing their money, putting, putting their money in Flint, and only thing they're saying is, with your one million, you're gonna turn for your man, one million into, into fifty-five, but you gotta invest in yourself. See, you can't sit around and wait for somebody else to do all your work. They said, your one million will turn into fifty-five. I think that's one of the best deals that we have for, for our mothers. And so I'm gonna vote for the mothers. I'm not gonna send it back. Cause again, it's time for us to stop playing with you all and either vote it up or down, so you can see where we stand. I said, full pardon with R S kids. At first, I didn't, I, I didn't know. I was like, hey, what's the whole point of us, um, I mean, they're gonna give all the money to us, and if there's no condition on to it, then yeah, there's no way to find a fifty-four million. But that wasn't the deal. Some of the donors said, in order to receive the complete sum of money, couldn't have to show that they're investing in itself. This one million of dollars coming, until the city transforms itself into fifty-five million, it's a no brainer. So now I wanna support, come from a word, I'm not sending it back either, either we want it or we don't. Thank you. And so with that being said, we're gonna go again and vote on the amended motion to stand resolution two three zero, two eight one point one. The R S kids program back to finance. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis.
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley, go. For the cards?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
You mean that?
No.
Or that?
No.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Will this four yes, four no?
The vote is, um, four yes and four no. That motion, that motion fails. So we're back to the, um, original, um, resolution. So is there, um, a resolution for two three zero, two eight one point one?
Madam Chair, was it already moved for approval or only? I moved it for approval.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve resolution two three zero, two eight one point one, the R S kids program of the first round of debate. Oh, my fault, excuse me. Is there a second? All right, second by Councilwoman Shet. Any debate?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. May?
For me, y'all moving irresponsibly, and you moving without consideration for trying to do something for the people. Now, if I come back later, maybe in thirty days or sixty days or whatever, but my position is, we need to, um, do a whole budget for the office funds. We need to know how much we gonna finally put into home improvement. Our way, I'm gonna say, remember, Ms. Priestley, you told me I walked up and talked to Jerry Winfrey Carter at this party. But you would coincidentally them talk all the time. But you tried to make a scene taboo when I talked. Y'all keeps me as a snake though all the time. And I miss word, and then Miss Winshett, I text her, I said, "I have a second to move this for approval." They roll in the taxes. If you support the kids. But I wanna knew, before I support the kids, I wanna see the budget for how much we gonna put at home improvement. I wanna see the budget, a lot of revenue, and then we got a business budget. For businesses, um, I'm gonna say your name. Ms., um, Green, you can sit back there and shake your head, but I'm the one who gonna vote on this. Through you have a terrible, Ms. Green, you ain't gotta sit back there and shake your head, no, you can approach it. Yeah, you sit back there and shake your head, no. But I'm gonna use my vote the way I wanna use. You know, we've been arguing about the twelve number people. Before you daddy, why you sit back there and shake your head, no, to what I say I wanna do with my vote?
I'm not, I disagree. It's time to vote it up or down, man.
Well, that's you. That's you. You know how long this money gonna be around until we obligated to spend? This ain't no deadline date. If you were sitting on the council, you would decide if you vote it up or down today. This is my vote.
I understand.
Okay, so you can disagree, but.
It's not that I disagree, it's cause I think it's just time to vote these things.
Okay, that's what you think.
Yes.
I think it months ago, it was time to vote the, the home improvement money up or down, but you couldn't get vote to come to a meeting.
I'm in.
Nah, I don't know how long you've been employed here, two months, three months, but you disagree, and I can spot it out.
I respect that.
This is gonna be my vote, what I choose to do, and the rest of them vote the way they choose. And y'all get frustrated. If you want, I was frustrated when Aunt Taylor called and the police had told us to break up Cala Pete in the dump.
I'm in.
That frustrated me, and I disagreed with that. You don't run residents out with five or six police, nearly dead, telling y'all. I'll start putting you in it with the y'all. This is ridiculous. Y'all think it's a joke, but I don't.
I don't think it's.
I take this very seriously, and I'm gonna make sure that residents get money allocated. And I'm gonna try to allocate more than five million for home improvement. I'll go up with to twenty million.
I know that's crazy.
I'll go two point five million for another round of premium pay for employees. I'm gonna make sure ten million to lower the loss revenue. I'm also make sure business category did something. I don't care what he would, he would work, and then what they all wanna do. All you gotta say is, think about, vote it up or down. You're good out for people, that's what you do. And you budget the whole pot. I don't have to, uh, vote it up or down, I didn't get here, two million and that. That's what you do, and you set up a council. I'm the council. Thank you so much.
Well, no, thank you. All right.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Ward?
Um, we, with all due respect, we've already done the work. We've already got the categories. We know what, what we wanna spend it in. Um, so it is now time to vote. We can no longer delay our funds going to residents. Uh, why would we do that? Why? So it's either you support it or you don't. I, I support it. And I, I think we need to, um, let our ex kids know if we're gonna give them money or not. Ms. Green, I'm sorry, you went all the way back there, but I would like to know, um, this isn't just an open-ended, breaking away ears to get this money. Um, when is the deadline to, um, uh, allocate?
Okay, so the deadline to allocate and to receive the, the one percent of the money that, I think I gave you a percentage, I won't say. The percentage of the money that the city can get in addition to the, uh, our dollars will be December thirty first.
December thirty first is here. Um, so how much would we get if we do it by then?
I think it's like three hundred fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty thousand. And then, um, I don't think I have other room, gonna be higher now. Thank you, um.
Well, go speak then.
All right, let's listen.
Hold on, I'm gonna think about it. Um, yeah, she will obviously in the second round. I'm just honestly just ready to, to vote, um, for this wonderful program. Um, and hopefully pregnant women and mothers will, um, get some relief. This is, as Ms. Green said, the doctor Lewis. This is going towards mothers in our own community. And, uh, I, I just can't believe if someone does vote this down, that we chose not to, but you have every right to. But when we talk about either going to, um, organizations or going to the people, this is going to the people. The very people that were hurt the most in the water crisis, and what justice it is being, uh, for families in Flint. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ward. Any others who'd like to speak in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Good morning, Congress.
This, um, this is Ms. Green.
Oh.
Another chair, Ms. Green. Um, did we find money for, um, House of Esther?
House of Esther, we're working on that now.
Okay.
So you get off, and I sent her over to, uh, the planning commission, where they have been finding that company.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy, you, you okay?
Whoa.
With, with that, because I feel you. I, I echo your sentiments.
Yeah.
As far as House of Esther.
Yes.
So, okay.
Ms. Karen, I'll make a regular thing. Yes, ma'am. So what we would like to do as well, I mean, you guys have elections that you guys, it's already for the archer dollars. If you'd like to set up like a one resolution with the council members of recommendations, I'm, I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round? Madam Chair. Ms. Byrne.
Shall it? I saw the last meeting, we talked about living out with them. Um, and I'm glad that now we have got council members for the House of Esther. And so I know the biggest component was, um, finding, funding, and when I talked to Devon, uh, she was stating, um, somebody who she had spoken with you, somebody, here's some other findings for it, like a program. Um, I know it worked. I get what she was saying, this House of Esther has been over a year, a little bit ahead of them. And so making sure that we're gonna give them, we're gonna give R S kids, that we give a maternity house for young mothers with babies where they age out of the system, to make sure that they're taken care of also. Personally, I think we, we, and I think we are, and they'll maybe have to make a decision, we gonna give something, which something should be given because they were just here also tonight. And this is the one thing, I know all my colleagues are in favor of this, and I don't like my colleagues to speak to whatever my motives are, because they shouldn't. I said from the beginning with our opponent, a teacher, that I supported this program, and I understood what Council Murphy was saying. Hey, you know, I'm on board. Now listen, we can do, and I, I appreciate that to come back around because I feel like, really like a, a healing moment with, with some of us on this council, said, let's do something, put the people first. And that's what, um, that's what we should be, was putting the people first with these programs. So I feel pretty confident, and I'm looking at like where this is going, Council Murphy, with, um, certain things that, you know, that could happen overnight, you know, with them, but I feel pretty good, uh, as long as you are still committed, uh, to this along with, um, the planning and development. I forget her name, Diana's daughter. Oh, she's.
Oh, Ash.
Yeah, Ash, I think, yeah, who, you know, is committed, you know, to this because I think I remain consistent. I put a contingent, and still I do not agree with the twelve person advisory committee, because I, I look at some of these programs that are approved that add, the arch advisor committee turned some of them down. So however they decided the group that they used, some of them did not pass. But I know that for young mothers, it is important, especially when they have babies, because you don't know what's gonna happen. My friend, my best friend's paid for daycare. It's nine hundred dollars a month, uh, for, to go to, to school for her grandchild. She paid, she paid up for it for her daughter, and her daughter's a great student nurse, but it's, you know, she makes pretty good money. You know, so what about those who haven't finished, you know, college and have a good job? It makes it harder. Um, I hate this program, it's getting stuck on people's opinions and how some of them, you know, it's like, it's been stuck on our personalities, to be honest with you. And it should not, we should be rising above the level to this, and I get, we have to take in all the information and say, hey, you know, what's right for this community? And if we are, and not good with leveraging funds for these young mothers, I think it should be done. I don't feel that it is welfare or handout. I do understand my colleagues, it's not a sustainable program. And once that funding, you know, runs out, then it's, it's out. I, I completely get that part. But for those who can take advantage of it at the time, we should make that happen and not throw out, you know, another millions of dollars to have a pilot program for the city of Flint. Although maybe in other areas, I believe Jan Marie Arlo, um, stated in the seventh ward, it'll be moved to Flint. And it'll be a help because we have, if the high infant mortality rate, we have, um, we have a lot of homeless young mothers. And rent is high. It's, it's high. It's more than a mortgage, you know, even if you're renting. So I think helping them out, because a lot of these are supermothers, you know, they, they were needed. It helps them to have better care, help pay for written clothing, daycare. I have always said I support it. What I have not supported was the twelve person advisory committee, and I've been consistent with that, and I do not support it. I have worked with you. You did some amazing things with your staff. I hope you too. And, um, I know Council Murphy, Council of the Paris, and, um, Council of May, you know, I, I don't know how they're going to vote, but I know children are always, you know, important as we push this House of Esther forward. To make sure that they're getting some things, and that, they're gonna end up hoping more than what they ever thought they would get, which is even better. So, thank you. You might have a vote to first, where is my vote?
Thank you. It's the girls, it's to your family. All right, anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round?
Ms. Murphy? Thank you. First of all, to my colleagues, please do not speak for me when it comes down to what my motive is when it comes down to this R S, um, funding. Cause really, I was, um, contemplating supporting it, but then when y'all got to talking about voting up or voting down, cause blah, 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 blah. It just made me just wanna say, no, I don't wanna support it now because I had some reserves about this because I know I talked to my colleague about making sure that we took care of House of Esther. And because that wasn't resolved, I had some reserves, so sending this back to finance was better for me and making my decision, not because I don't like it or don't wanna support it. But when y'all looking, um, throwing cheap shots about, um, our motive, that just made me don't wanna do it. And I'm just saying to y'all, speak for y'allself. Don't speak for me. And when y'all keep talking about what y'all thinking doing, you don't really know. Cause you ain't asked. You just assumed. So y'all go talking about, okay, well, you, um, y'all don't wanna, um, vote for this. No, I wanna make sure House of Esther is taken care of. So I wanted, I know my colleagues said they was gonna get back with me about House of Esther. I, they haven't gotten with me yet. So I wanna make sure that they was good on that before I move forward. But if y'all is assuming, y'all know what we thinking. So I want to make sure that they was good on that before I move forward. But if y'all is assuming, y'all know what we thinking. That could make me don't want to vote for it just because, because I'm just that kind of person.
All right, um, next, uh, speaker in the first round. Anyone else have to speak? All right, Chair. Is that, uh, Ms. Councilor?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, Councilman Murphy, I certainly understand your frustrations. And, I mean, I, I would ask our colleagues to refrain from speaking for you. Because I get you had said time and time again about your support of House of Esther and I would like to see them move forward. And you've also said, uh, you do believe that this is a program, a good program as well. Um, I've watched you time and time again up here overcome, um, things that would make the average person upset, or make the average person not carry out what you're doing, these are walking your integrity. So I just thank you for continuing to do that. And I know that tonight it won't be any different, but I, I understand your frustrations.
Now, Karen, you couldn't act all like.
All right, uh, anyone else? All right, well, seeing no one else, I'll be, um, the last speaker in this round. Um, I, how, how can I help them phrase this? Either we're gonna vote it up or down. You know, with it or you're not. It's not fallout at all. This is just, it's, it's time to just express our support for our disdain, looking to move forward. Now, the unfortunate part with, um, House of Esther, and we had this conversation, Councilman Murphy, is House of Esther did not apply for ARPA dollars at all. I'm gonna say it again, the House of Esther did not apply for any ARPA dollars. So, um, again, let's stop, you know.
For ladies.
And so, Mr., that's your first one, or?
What's up? Yo, what's up?
All right, um, so, if they did not apply for, for funding, how can we allow them to skip the entire line of all of the nonprofits that applied for the funding? Now, what I'm strongly in favor of is after we go through the, the entire list and we vote, and when we decide on who we're gonna fund per who applied, cause again, it's not fair to bring in somebody who didn't apply for anything into the process. It's not fair. Go up, miss them.
Okay, the House of Esther funding will not be coming from ARPA. It will be coming from the planning department, CDPG dollars and home dollars. And we're gonna offer that to other people that applied for ARPA that didn't get it, that, that turned out will be some of the first people that will look at.
Okay, can, can you just say that one more time, into the line and into the record?
So the ARPA, the House of Esther will not be funded from the ARPA dollars. There are CDPG and home dollars that are coming available. And so some of the other people that are, are organizations on the list that did not get approved or did not, we, we're gonna give them first, we're gonna let them apply for CDPG and home dollars so that we can kind of help this city move forward.
Thank you so much, Ms. Green. And that's what we need to hear because we have, we have limited dollars. It's not fair to allow an organization that did not apply for ARPA because they were talking about ARPA dollars. So I wanted to clear as, as we speak on ARPA specifically. We can't allow an organization that did not apply for ARPA dollars to get allocated money from ARPA in front of everybody that did apply. So it's time for us to either vote those that did apply up or we're gonna vote them down. And then from there, we can look at how much money we have in the reserves and then we can decide, okay, well, do we have extra money to give people that didn't apply? Do we have extra money to fund great things like we're working on getting medical debt, uh, erased from, uh, President in the City of Flint? Do we have extra money to fund these innovative programs through this COVID money? So I really want to make that clear. It's not that anyone has anything against House of Esther at all, but we have to make sure things are done in order. We need to make sure that those that do not, that are not going to receive funding from ARPA, that they are contacted and then they are made aware of what Ms. Green just said. They are made aware of how to and when to apply for these alternative funding. But we will be unfair if we allow people that did not apply for ARPA money to get in front of everyone that did. So I just want to make sure that we have an understanding about that. Cause I know, uh, I'm about to get attacked. It's okay, I'm here for you. But we, we need to make sure that the public understand how that's going. All right, so, um, thank you, Ms. Green. Now, I don't know, they might vote in the second round, so yeah, please go ahead and, and just stay, stay put. And, um, and so I'll go ahead and do the rest of my time. I'll hear Ms. Warren in first, and then you, Ms. Green.
Um, I just want to say, when I said let's vote this up or down, I never mentioned anyone's name. I never said anyone's intentions. I said it is time to vote this up or down. And it is, and that's my opinion. So I, my vote is not tied to what anyone else here says or what anyone else here thinks. My vote is my vote. So my words shouldn't ever influence anyone else's vote, especially when I wasn't addressing them in any way. Um, we have to put our emotions aside and vote on the issue at hand. And the issue at hand are pregnant mothers and babies that deserve funds after everything we've been through. It would be a shame if Flint, one of the poorest cities in this nation, rejects this, uh, when it's a program around the country and others are getting the same help. So we have an opportunity to take one million and make fifty-five million. Uh, it, it would be a shame. That's my feeling. So if someone feels shamed if I say that, then I think that's something personal to you, not me. Cause I don't feel shame when others people say their opinion because I am steadfast. I know what I'm gonna vote. I know the research I've done. I know that I care about this very much. And so I'm just ready to say, hey, and if it gets voted down, I'll be, I'll be devastated, as will many women in, um, in this city. However, we cannot hold up these funds any longer. We have a special meaning to get this done. We need to vote and, um, you know, let them know if we're gonna give them the funds or not. We need to do this by December. We have a lot more work to do and we're not even close. So, thank you.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, if I may. When she out of the seat, it's pretty predictable to you, but whoever.
Go ahead, Ms. Main.
Let me try to set the record straight. It's very bad. I don't know if I came in, I'm gonna tell you, and what you were saying, and I really don't know what you were saying, so, you know, bear with me. But you got everybody, not everybody, and you hear council people like this is a deadline day. This ain't no deadline day. You can vote it down today and talk about it and bring it back thirty days later. In that thirty-day period of time, hopefully we didn't have a ARPA meeting where we can get the budget together on all categories of money, including this. And you can see where your money at, how much you're spending, how much you're working with, do you need to amend this budget at that budget? They just have to vote it up or down like it's a deadline day. And then walk the news to say for those who weren't ready, because we ain't get a full budget, oh, they voted it down. No, I can support it, but I want to support it after I do my whole budget. If I'm going to Kroger's, gotta stop by Walmart, and then go to Sam's Club, I want to know how much money I'm working with, what I'm gonna buy at Kroger, what I'm gonna buy at Walmart, and what I'm gonna buy at Sam's. And then I want to know how much money I got left. This ain't no, uh, vote it up or down. This is about doing the total budget. And then making decisions. That's what it's about for me. But ain't nobody gonna put no words in my mouth, talking about voting up or down today. This is the day. It ain't the day. We got plenty of days ahead of us. This the first day folks have showed up for our ARPA meeting. Amen. Now here we council people, we call ARPA meeting, ain't nobody here. Immediately, he ain't the legislative branch, can't allocate these meetings. He calling me certain folks ahead. And it's that ludicrous. Somebody run the executive branch, we run the legislative branch. We the legislative branch call our ARPA meeting, ain't nobody here. The executive branch call our ARPA meeting, oh, this is the day voting up or down, the mayor called the meeting. Well, yeah. It's ludicrous. For our Congress. That's the monitor, Tisha Hammer. Lawrence Venuson, residents, Ms. Lewis, you say, you don't want House of Esther to skip the line. Do you know what did that House of Esther put in them initial request forms? Seven hundred people put in them initial request form. You let other people skip the line.
Request for information.
Is it illegal one or you gonna warn yourself?
So what does the initial request form mean?
All I know is it's some paperwork from seven hundred vote residents that you say ain't real. I said it is real, they believe it's real. You said it ain't real, it means something. It mean you finna let people skip the line. But they were first in line. And you were, uh, voted for the form and then all of a sudden, you, if somebody got a home to you and you said, them forms ain't real.
Request for information.
Stop my clock.
Did you forget that this council voted to use those forms to gather information from a listening session and not to pour an official way to apply for ARPA?
Do you forget? You warned me two, three times about use a privileged motion, you gonna rule me out or that? And I'm gonna have to be escorted out by police and you doing that now and I want to warn you and get you out of it? Do you realize that? You're a hypocrite. You don't want us to do, you don't want us to do privileged motions. You don't want us to do a request information when you talking, you be, here we go again. But you do the same thing. That's called hypocritism. You're a hypocrite. There's a fact that them people were first in line. There's a fact that was over seven hundred of them. There's a fact they the people who vote. Then you up there talking about you want stuff done in order and people skipping the line. You're a hypocrite. You're a hypocrite for requesting information and using privileged motion. You're a hypocrite talking about people skipping the line. You're a hypocrite talking about a guy be voting up or down today. It can be voted down today to see if that can know them. We got to December. I'm speaking. I ain't got the preset on this green. These goopy roots, are they suspended and we talk business back there?
Thank you, Ms. Main. So, um, we are in the second round. Anyone else who'd like to speak in the second round? Madam Chair. Ms. Warren. Thank you. Did you want to?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. Mainz, Councilman Mainz, I'm willing to work with you. I mean, whatever you need me to do to get this set up, to help you with the meeting, the working meeting, we can do it.
Request information. I asked for documents and you told me cloud and administration was blocking them, so you didn't want to work with me for this, because you can't get it.
The documents were delivered today.
You go up for me?
I gave that to you, to you.
I ain't got them yet. Let me see, some request information. Did anybody give up to me? I'll tell you, they the documents I requested three weeks ago. Who got them?
Well, there it is. There you go.
So we are trying to work with you. I just need to know.
It's going, it's going, it's going to get them, it's just an act. I wanted to do the management.
Okay.
I want you to fix your go to.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause I, that part was important. Um, and I wanted to be clear, House of Esther did get out those initial forms, so they're going. They, they, yeah, yeah, they did. They did. They do have initial one of those forms. You shaking your head. They, they did it.
Oh, you're talking about the seven hundred?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there are.
It's five hundred and thirty-two. I can work with it. It's five hundred and thirty-two.
Five hundred, okay, five hundred and thirty-two. And so it's not skipping the line. And we talking about how people, some people were added, some people were added to be determined. You know, I don't know if you change who your director and your person is, should you still be allowed? Has your information changed? So should Cyrus Park anything because you changed your director? You changed what you were requesting. And when you spin a finger and talk like, oh, that's crazy, that's just amazing to me. I'm so sick of you. So, there are, there are. So, Councilman Murphy, um, and I have, and he left. We, we got, yeah. And, and I'll speak to him, cause I haven't had a chance to, um, to speak to him because I didn't have him, you know, my nephew was murdered. So I have not had a chance to, um, to reach out to him. And I, I am going to do that, that I, cause I did speak on the bond, I had, you know, spoken with people. I like where this, where this is going. The investors still say that they will still be a part of, um, House of Esther, House of Esther Committee, Councilor Risha, that's a commitment that she still has that part. Uh, along with being able to do some other great things for, for the community. But here's the thing, they need to talk about what we voting for, my colleagues. They need to stop that. Let your vote be a vote without talking about your colleagues. I mean, it, it's frustrating when you have a, you don't get along. I mean, that, that's not gonna change. But the House of Esther and IREX kids should stand among for the work that they do and that they will do. How, actually, House of Esther is doing the work. And they're doing it from another church, uh, Judson Church with Reverend, uh, Pastor Rowan to get the work done. So they never stopped. They were temporarily, they doing outreach, but they have never stopped. So, I don't want to make anyone's, you know, we talking about vote up, vote down. This is the first time that we have had really all of the closest thing to a working session that we have had, the very first time. And four council members showed up. We had five that did not show up to the working sessions to do the work. We could have had all this done if they had just showed up. They never showed up. Then there was the issue with having the, the ad hoc committee stated that the administration wasn't getting this before you, was not getting back with them. And that they felt, uh, they were kept in the, they stayed, they were kept in the diary and things are secretive. So there was nothing to report. So this has been, this isn't a council, this is a part of, is a part of the administration issue. And we had council members who should have showed up to do the work, because we should be working together. We could come together, like you said, but we can't do it, you know, we have to, you know, violate some meetings. Say, we gotta do it in an open forum. And that was the purpose of saying, let's go through it in an open forum to do it. And I get to tell my colleagues, oh, it's gonna take too much time. But if it's more time, we could have been done with the open forum and been done with it. You know, cause this is why this is dragging out. And everybody just, it, it has to get beyond personal dislikes and all of the craziness that, that happens in these council chambers. It has to. So Council, as the Councilman Murphy, they will, they, it's had dollars and programs that really are similar to like my brothers' keepers, um, Shelter, but I did give it to you about Shelter of Flint, because someone called me and said that they have paid maybe some money. I got that on my way here, um, that I need to speak to you about. So there's a lot of different things that need to go on in this council. And, Councilman, I feel pretty good about the House of Esther and I'll share with you, uh, about it. That's my time. Thank you. Madam Chair. Anyone else who'd like to speak in the second round? Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Warren.
Okay, this is where I'm at. There's, there's enough money in the pot for every, for everybody to get a piece of it. I don't even know what, what the issues are. But I do want to say this. It was that twelve, that illegal twelve member, um, committee, ARPA committee. Okay? Counsel was to be totally disregarded. We were disrespected. So now, here we are. We've already, we've had, what, three ARPA meetings, only four council members showed. So now, here we are, we've already, we've had, what, three ARPA meetings, only four council members showed up. Others did not. But when the mayor calls a meeting, here we are, everybody is here, you know? And they ready to all of a sudden go to work and vote everything up or down, okay? We got people saying, vote it up or down, or they'll say something like, um, let's not accept. Let me say this and, and let me make this clear, you can either vote yes, you can either vote no, or you can accept if you choose to. Now. Today, I'm thinking about everybody, I'm thinking about the residents, I'm thinking about the, the five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred people that put in those forms. Alright? I'm thinking about those residents who need home improvements. I'm thinking about Ms. Jackie here who needs a new porch. And don't get me wrong, I'm all for RX kids, I'm all for House Esther. But the bottom line is, alright, Ms. May, I wanna see where all of this money is going and how many more resolutions we're gonna have coming before us. Yeah, yeah, I see this, but you know what? To me, this is really not telling me anything, I can't even read this thing, is this what you said to us, Ms. Green?
No, that's part of.
Because what I can't see is, was it recommended by the alleged twelve member, um, opera committee?
The yellow highlighted is the ARPA committee's recommendations.
Okay, alright, and so the rest of everything, they did not approve. Now, and with this, how many of these did not, um? We, you know, we're getting resolutions of people who didn't even apply.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, so, it's almost like, what are we doing?
Ms., Ms. Carter, Councilwoman Carter, two. Wait for Carter, wait for Carter to see the rest of the, that sheet didn't print out everything, but if you go into the document, you can see what they said about each one of them. But you know, it's a long spreadsheet to print out, so you only just have a part of it, I apologize for that.
Yeah. I don't, you know what, I don't know how I'm gonna vote today. Because I would have wanted this to go back to prime address. Now, I do support RX kids, don't get me wrong, but there are some other things we need to be doing.
I respect that.
Uh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I don't have opinion one way or another, I'm just trying to move forward.
Alright, so, um, anyone else like to speak in the second round?
Madam Chair. Three of you to speak here, um, I, I will say with this, I am in support of RX kids. Uh, what this will mean for mothers and families starting in twenty twenty-four, I, I think, um, it is going to set them up in a way that they may have. This gives the money that they did not have access to, the thing about, about applying ARPA funding to this particular, um, to this particular request is that it saves those who are getting assistance from having their assistance lower, getting any money that they receive from this program. They will continue to receive their same benefits from other programs that they might be receiving from, without those benefits being cut. And so I think that that helps it serve the purpose of what this is for and that is to make sure that those mothers and those children, um, are, are able to have a, a better start in life, especially for those babies. And then I think when we speak about, um, so many of the other deals and things that we have in this community, this is the way that we begin to address it, literally from birth, right? Think about how many other people in our community, how many lives would have been changed if from birth, they would have had this opportunity, their parents would have had this opportunity. Um, and I, and I hear my colleagues and I love the fact that, um, except for one of us, which I can respect, she's been completely honest with us from the beginning. Uh, we're, we are all in agreement that this is a great program, we are all in agreement to support mothers and to support children. And so, I'm happy to see that this is something that brought nearly all of us together, um, and, and so I am in full support of RX kids. I, I, again, I don't think, cause it cannot be overstated, the fact that, um, if the ARPA funds safeguards them from losing any other benefits. Shows the fact that this program has been done in other cities and the benefits that it has had for those mothers and those children. And so I am here tonight and I'm, I'm fully ready to say yes to RX kids and mothers, um, yes to the starting in twenty twenty-four. Uh, thank you for your work, cause I know you, you and I came in at the same time, so we're both kind of trying to understand, you know, all these spreadsheets and all those things that are before us, all of the money that was applied. And so I know that takes a lot coming into this, I mean, you're the one preparing the spreadsheets and trying to fix them and everything in the way that we like them and me, you and I coming at the same time, me trying to kind of play catch up. And now, I'm understanding and I hear all of my colleagues when they say that there needs to be another look taken, right? Uh, and I'm all for, you know, looking at what they present as well, cause I feel like, um, there can be something that we all come up with that we feel would be best for the community. And so I can't wait to see the plans that they present and the money that they lay, lay out as well, I think we all should have that opportunity. Um, as you very well know, I am all for residents getting new roofs fixed. And so, um, if we get out more residents getting new roofs, I, clearly I would vote for it and say yes to them, you know, so, um, tonight, right now, at this particular point in time, this is about RX kids. And I am going to vote yes for RX kids right now tonight, because this is what we're talking about right now, so, thank you.
Alright, anyone else like to speak in the last round? Anyone? Alright, we see that we have no one else to speak, I'll go ahead and choose the last person. Um, looking forward to voting for, um, upper down. We will, um, we will have a decision tonight and we will see if people get the funding tonight. Uh, I, I don't want the residents knowing up to lose sight of what I'm saying. And we have YouTube videos to prove this, it has been stated that those, uh, initial forms, we use those to gather data during our listening session. That's what this body approved those for. Unbeknownst to us, those forms began to be used as a way to apply for money. And that was never authorized by this body. Go ahead, Ms. May, what's your request?
Are you making up just those out what they stated were initial request forms and ain't nobody unbitten, no, it's nobody?
Mr. May?
May I finish you?
No, you may not, no, you may not, because that, because that wasn't a proper use of request for information. Uh, again, according to council rules, you use a request for information to gather information that you did not know and to go towards your next vote. That's what requests for information are used for, you use that request for information to illegally take the floor.
You did that earlier.
And so, as we proceed and, no yelling out, as we proceed with meeting, we have, we did not once say that those forms were to, to be used to apply. Because if that's the case, what about our handicap residents? What order did they come in? I mean, it would, they would have been a lot differently, my PhD is in evaluation, so when it comes down to systems and programs and processes, that's what I specialize in. Councilpeople can lie if they want to, but I, I, I did the work, it's a real PhD. And the fact of the matter is, we did not authorize that specific form for that. We use that form to create buckets, categories, so people know what the residents' priorities are. We found out that the resident issues were public health, that they were blank. We found out what you guys thought, you guys wanted more youth program, more, more youth enrichment, you guys wanted job training. These are the things that, that you put down on those forms. And so those forms were submitted and categorized, but unfortunately, those forms were repurposed again. They, so we did not authorize those for that and I do apologize to the people who were told that that form was your, was your foot in line. Cause that was not accurate, that was not true. And so I'm sorry that you were lied to. What is your point?
Who I can represent and lie to?
Uh, Mr. May doesn't follow point order, but I will answer that request for information. Whoever told you that you can use that form to acquire ARPA money, that's who lied to you. And so, with that being said, we have to stop yelling out now. We have to stop yelling out. We have to stop yelling out now. You all, we can, this is a collective effort as we conduct the bill of assembly. We need for our council people to maintain it on as well as the people in the audience. But in terms of RX kids, this is the ultimate leverage, returning one dollar into fifty. In the end, when, if, if we have more monies left, then we can revisit House Esther after we identify those that have applied, after we vote them up or down. And after we, you know, and while we're presenting our pick projects, then we can bring House Esther back up. But we wanna make sure that we serve those individuals that apply. If you don't agree with that, I have nothing else for you, cause that's serious. So, with that being said, we are voting for our resolution two three zero two eight one point one, the resolution for the RX kids program. Roll call, Madam Chair.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain my vote until we can have a working plan meeting so we can find out where the money is.
Ms. Burn?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Abstain until we have a working session, I'm for the kids to do help, but at this point, until we do the whole budget and have a working, uh, session, I'm abstaining on this vote to approve this tonight.
Yes.
You voted five yes, one no, two, six?
Two of those five yes, one no, two, fifteen, the resolution two three zero two eight one point one has passed.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Ms. Free.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend two three zero three one zero to two three zero three one zero point one. And change the dollar amount and the, um, approved, um, allocation to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with ten, conditional ten percent for, um, administration fiduciary fee, which may be make it, I believe, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars by funding neighborhood beautification fiduciary for Southside Neighborhood Coalition, Ward nine. Um, clothes and open foundations and tear down burn houses fiduciary for Carriage Town Neighborhood Association, Ward five. And handicap and access country work fiduciary for College Cultural Neighborhood Association, Ward seven. And each one of those are funded at fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so Ms. Free, I'm a little confused, so, did you just do multiple resolutions?
No, Ms. May, I amended the resolution by removing, um, all but three, um, of the allocations.
Okay, alright, so.
I'm removing the ten thousand dollars for each council member for direct white removal. Okay. Okay, the ten thousand dollars for each council member for direct white removal, I'm removing that. Since there was no community allocation to reopen East Side Tool Shed, it was not utilized.
So, what, what, what's that, Ms. Free? Did you say, oh, uh, well, four point one, or did you say, uh, three ten point one?
Three ten point one, to make to, amended to a three ten point one.
Okay, so you can't do that. We, we, you know, you're skipping two three zero three zero four.
Oh, I, you know what, it's not in my, I didn't put it in my, my bookwork, I was engaged.
So, um.
But I did make the motion and we can come back to three oh three oh four.
Okay.
I'll write that right now.
Alright, and so, just to be clear, you wanna take those one?
So, I, I, I accidentally skipped two three zero three zero four, but I still, I, I am, I'm still making the motion for two three zero three one zero, we can come back to two three zero three zero four.
Oh, okay, so, um, so I had, we are within our packet, we are on one, two, three, four, we're on the fifth page. Okay, so, two three zero three ten, and you said you want to get rid of the ten thousand dollars for each council member for direct white removal?
Correct, and to reopen East Side Tool Shed, which was never used.
Okay.
Um, service parking improvements with fifty thousand dollars for Wards one, three, six, and eight. So, that would leave us with a hundred and fifty thousand to the, um, neighborhood beautification fiduciary for Southside Neighborhood Coalition for fifty thousand. Um, clothes, open foundations, and tear down burn houses fiduciary for Carriage Town Neighborhood Association for five, fifty thousand.
Uh, Ms. Free, please tell, what's your point on this?
Are we on two three zero three zero four?
No, we are on two three zero three one zero.
I accidentally skipped that one, Mr. May, we can go back for that one.
When?
Um, so wait, I don't back for it. So, not, not a problem, so, we have.
I will draw my motion. I will, Madam Chair, I will make motion to approve two three zero three zero four.
Alright, so I'll sit there second. And they're seconded by the councilwoman, uh, rightly so, so, it has been, uh, probably seconded by the councilwoman yet. So, go ahead, um, it's up to Ms. May.
As a matter of fact, you, Ms. Free, and Ms. Free, I don't mind what you were doing, but you know, they've been such a stickler with me to want a warning, to want to give a second warning and turn again, give a total legal opinion. I have to call orders of that, because I say we can suspend the rules, we stick with the agenda, you know, they make exceptions for yep. When if I raise an issue that has a different reason for black vote versus black vote, everybody's giving up. And this what they'll do is is a perpetual offender of that type of person. So, you know, my position is the same, I'm not wishy-washy. I'm still abstaining, I told a guy here from, um, Latinx Technology, that until we get the budget right, I've been involved in the lawsuits on the twelve member body and I'm not wishy-washy. My position is Mr. Neely call a meeting and council people lose their minds. Some say we need a total budget, some say this recommendation wasn't legal, I'm gonna stay pretty much consistent. I'm gonna stay pretty much consistent. Nobody gonna put words in my mouth about whether I support kids and infants, I do. Nobody gonna put words in my mouth, and I'm not gonna feel funny on my extension and my votes for Latin X or nobody. And that's the way it is. This mayor is running, making a pool out of this council. Making a total pool out of this council. He wanna run the exception and branch in the legislative branch then, all he have to do is get folks a ride in a police car to the council meeting. And they go crazy. They're afraid if I broke another down, I got a ride to tap them quick there, I pulled up today and I seen folks, um, standing by the police car, I think it must be true. The mayor done called a meeting, or offered meeting, and you ain't come. I don't, the mayor called a meeting. I don't need to see a total budget, Mr. Faber, all I need to do is tell him the mayor called a meeting. And it was on ABC twelve, it was on ABC twelve, people looking at me. I bet not bow a certain way out, I mean, it's not crazy, we haven't done our job, but the mayor called this meeting and people looking at me. You could all they want. I'm saying council folks come and go. I'm saying mayors come and go. We got thirty to fifty million dollars, and I'm not gonna jibble it up until I see the big picture. And I'm not gonna budget thirty to fifty million dollars in five or ten minutes. Scared to ask my cop to question, you're out of order. You did a request for information to gain the floor, no I didn't, I did it to clarify some information. Um, a motion has been made all in favor of a point of order, you forgot to ask us a second, you're out of order. You didn't call point of order, remind me that I didn't ask for a second, I was just getting ready to do that, you're out of order. Unbelievable, unbelievable, unbelievable. I've never been treated so disrespectful and wrong, and I've never listened to certain mess. Hypocrites, I don't wanna be one. I be everything, I can be late for dinner, but I don't wanna be a hypocrite. What, tell me what you got now, huh, what? I complain? See, I know what this game is. I've been around it for thirty, forty years, while this word and thing I wasn't working. I worked with General Mother for thirty years. Elect the U A W official, and she got to bury the crap on me about I wasn't working. I'm retired and still working.
Alright, Ms. Priest?
Yes, um, I didn't realize, I wanna make an amended motion. I wanna amend this, um, resolution to two three zero three zero four and remove the words specifically in Ward Four, because, and the reason why I wanna do that is to, because their application said third, fourth, and fifth wards. So I wanna, I wanna remove specifically in Ward, Ward Four, and, um, put in wards three, four, and five per their application, and I surrender.
Alright, so amended motion to include wards, um, three and five?
Yes.
Alright.
Madam Chair.
Alright, got it, so, um, I'm just making.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna second that amended motion.
Okay, so it has been approved, department second, so, um.
Madam Chair.
Um, Minister May?
Yeah, Madam Chair, to you, Ms. Priest, and the rest of the council and the audience as well. Do you remember when I raised that issue when the gentleman first was here? You remember Ms. Green? And they was all over the place, and here he is at this later date coming back from the mayor with Ward Four. That's true, you folks ain't did, they don't worry about it, they act and cross their teeth, but you know, the mayor put this agenda together. The mayor, I gotta show up because you were on channel twelve, the mayor called. It's the craziest thing I ever seen. You know, the, 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 the mayor, he can't spend a dime per se. Can't allocate no money, can't make no rules. We do. We call a meeting in the dawn, ain't but four people here, the rest are not home, guess when they'll show up? When the mayor come? When I came here today, I said, I, I'm gonna make a prediction, the mayor gonna get one of them a ride in a police car. You know, I've been a councilman for ten years, and they ain't had no police pick me up to bring me to work. I think we ought to spend our funds to get everybody ten rides in a police car to council meeting. I was gonna make an amendment on this. Spend the money to give everybody ten rides to the council meeting, cause somebody said something to me. Now, Lord knows, I don't want nobody to hurt mom or dad. But this verbal abuse that I'm experiencing from the person who didn't arrive, it's ludicrous. You scared getting a ride, but you beat me up every chance you get in the public video. And people looking at you, you're a bully. I'm scared to speak because you want a second warning, I'll throw you out of the mayor's meeting. The mayor has told me that you can beat throughout this meeting, and all you have to do is I call the chief of police, and they'll remove you with poor police, Mr. May, cause you said point of order. I'm thinking, we've been in so many union meetings, calling point of order, point of information, two, three hundred people. And ain't nobody got arrested throughout the U A W number five, nine, eight, five, ninety-four, but you get in one of these mayor meetings. They say the chief of police ordered that I be arrested and ordered removed. You know, you don't have to be handcuffed to be arrested. If a police officer in uniform restricts your freedom of movement, you been under arrest. And if you hesitate to buzz against it, you gonna complicate your case because it's gonna be called resisting arrest. I think they got evidence, if we look at the nine one one, take evil word and dial the nine one one, you gotta get the black man out of here. He said point of order. I'm gonna call the mayor, and the chief of police. Like, this is the chief, I want him ordered out for police control on those offer resolutions with that sense. Oh, he's not getting to man, yeah, that's why y'all keep throwing me out, cause I'm counting. When you dealing with millions of dollars, they want you out if you can count. We gotta get him out of here, just give him two warnings, uh, uh, I can give him two warnings, yeah, the mayor said you can. And the mayor will call chief bringing him down and remove, because he can count money. He count billions of dollars, and, and then sometimes make arguments about it, and it could change the motive to get him out of here. But what do I do? Well, just say the mayor said. So that's what y'all seen last week, and you seeing it this week too. They trying to make doggone to get me out of this meeting. And then we can try to move forward, but, but the mayor won't. What did Eva grow?
She got, they got a vote.
Oh, we got another fifth vote.
Alright, so thank you so much, Mr. May, anyone else like to speak on this amended motion, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, um, I have an issue with this right here, and this resolution, it says that, um, through the U L D's in a specific level and review scoring process six of the fifteen buckets, as well as additional recommendations for ten thousand to all nine council awards, plus fifty thousand to four of the wars that didn't have a specific project already identified, has been chosen by the mayor for recommendation for funding.
Request, man, propose.
What's your request?
To you, Mr. Murphy, if we on two three zero three zero four?
So, uh, the chair can answer that, yes.
I would point of order. My request was to Mr. Murphy.
Go ahead, Mr. Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, I am on resolution two three zero three zero four. So, um, Good Church applied for some funding too. This, this, when you read this part again, it say, um, wars plus all nine council wars plus fifty thousand to four of the wars that didn't have a specific project. Good Church had a specific project, they have been there and great work. So this resolution is not true, so I'll make a request and then, um, a motion to move this.
Request for amendment? So are you aware that what, that what you're talking about is not villain, blight, this is with blight? What you're talking about is with public health, that's a totally different bucket, totally different recommendation.
Well, this resolution is on. The two three zero three zero four resolution is what I'm looking at right here. I'll make a, uh, motion to move this back to finance.
Okay, so, um, so we're on ready for, um.
An amended motion?
Right.
You know, I, well, if we don't move this back to finance, I'm gonna vote this down, because I'm not gonna give fifty thousand dollars for the Latinx community when Good Church asked for some funding, and I asked for them to bring a resolution for Good Church, and I'm not gonna watch Latinx community getting a fifty thousand dollars when, um, I've been seeing this church for the last two years, um, for that funding. With that, put it up, and you can come out and get my eyeball, boy. And all the tax here have been switched, and told them bring me a resolution, and they could have brought a resolution for a add-on, they didn't wanna do that, they said we couldn't add that on to the GIBL, so therefore I am not supporting. My vote is no, we can vote it up or down, like y'all said.
Alright, um, let me make sure I'm on the correct spot. Alright, anyone else who likes to speak in the first round?
Uh, yes. Madam Chair, um, now, I see where they initially applied twenty-five thousand. And then the administration, I guess, gave them an additional two-five thousand. My thing is this, we need to be giving people what they applied for.
Yep.
So, I will not be voting for this. Like, I, I gotta make up my mind if I'm gonna abstain my vote until they can get it right, or I'm gonna vote no. It's my decision. I can either vote yes, no, or I can abstain. Thank you.
Alright, anyone else who likes to speak in the first round? Anyone else like to speak in the first round?
Um, Madam Chair.
Ms. Jett?
Uh, going to you to Ms. Shelley Sparks, three.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
It's an exercise. I, I want to, um, my colleague did raise a good point, right? Um, but I want to be sure that I heard you correctly the last time, when you said that what happened was certain things went in certain buckets, and when we didn't have enough to fulfill, um, those bases, that was the reason, why some extra money was added?
Yeah, with the, um, neighborhood cleanup project, once we got all the recommendations in, we realized that there was some awards that didn't get funded to do any cleaning projects, and there were awards that was really needed work, so the mayor, the admin side, let's just give all the awards fifty thousand, ten thousand to each of the councilmen, so that they can do what they feel like they need to do in their community as far as cleanup. So that was the adjustment.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, going to you to my colleague's fifth one. That's the one, I was trying to ask you something. Oh, okay, have a good evening, so, back to you. Um, I think you can answer my question, I was trying to be important, make sure I addressed my colleague's point, cause I was actually about to agree with her, but she's not in the mood tonight, thank you, alright.
Alright, so thank you, Ms. Green, anyone else? Ms. Priest, are you, are you?
I'm ready for Ms. Priest, I'm gonna, I'm.
Oh, no, you have not.
Alright, then I'll take my time. Um, I'm gonna make an amendment to my amendment, thank you, um, Mr. Jeremy, free card, I don't agree right now with giving money more than what they applied for, so I will amend it also to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Request for information?
Yes.
Um, yeah, why don't we just vote it down, Madam Chair?
No, I want, I want to give some of the money on this, so.
Alright, so, so you wanna add?
So I, so my amendment to my amendment is to change the dollar amount to twenty-five thousand dollars, which is what they applied for.
So, so change to the twenty-five dollars into the Latinx?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright. Alright, um, so, is, is that all, Ms. Priest?
Yes, it, oh, oh, no, no, ma'am, I'm in regards to Mr. Murphy, um, and Good Church. Yes, there you go, you're right, Mr. Murphy.
So, I understand, I'm trying to make sure that you're in.
I'm done.
Okay, so, um, now that we had that amended motion for it, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, Mr. Murphy, second that?
Madam Chair.
Um, no, hold on a second.
Uh, so the first amendment, which we haven't voted on yet, is to change it to the wards third, five, three to five, right? And my amendment is to change the dollar amount from fifty to twenty-five.
Okay, I have no objection, okay, um, alright, go ahead, proceed.
Okay, so, uh, we need some amendments.
Oh, Mr. Murphy, you.
Okay, so, um, the reason why I, I, I'm, I am going to be making amendments to some of these resolutions to fit what they, um, applied for, or to fit what the council has said that they want, in order to get some of this, these, um, these dollars moved. In regards to Good Church, we're gonna give Good Church the money, yes, if they're, if it's appropriate thing, but let's get what we've got in front of us done, because with my amendments that I have up, we're gonna have a lot more money to give out. So, um, that's why I'm doing what I'm doing, and I, I've got several other, other amendments throughout the night, I've already talked about one that was out of order because it was not in the right place, so, um, let's, let's get some of this out, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Prisley.
They can amend, suspend, upend, re-rim. I'm gonna vote the same way. Now, if y'all wanna suspend the rules, go over the total budget includes me, our fifty billion dollar amendment that I made, forty-five million dollars that would take the home improvement up to twenty million. You might get some action with me, but I'm gonna stick with the motion that I made to amend by day and the home improvement to twenty million and it disappeared like ghosts. I know we're this Halloween season, but a councilman's motion should just disappear in the thin air. I'm tripping, Mr. Murphy, but I can assure you a hundred percent. Ms. Claire McQuinn was trying to get an amendment, sixteen million, I amended it to fifteen million. And it disappeared from the legal department to the ad hoc committee and we ain't seen it since. It showed in coming the mayor's recommendation, but it was a council motion. And I'm tripping, but they did this deal. Ms. Prisley talking to Murphy, ain't nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying, cause she the one that said I was talking to Ms. Win Pricard and Ms. Claire. It was a big deal. Did you see him, he got up and went and talked to Ms. Win Pricard? They've been talking for months. They had an illegal meeting the other day and look at Attorney. Ms. Lewis hit the average frustration. We launched a ten-minute recess. Me and Piper objected once. We said, you can't do that. Man, they cleared their seats and then we looked on YouTube after the chief asked me to be removed with force and they was neat. And Evo that got two warnings was, they picked both. And I see downstairs doing interviews with Channel Five. I made it. I made it, I got four people voting with me. I'm in the majority. I'm here, that's the mayor told me to come here. And we passed a resolution. And the resolution we passed had to do with the babies. I'm all in support of the babies. With House asking, this wasn't no deadline day, oh, I forgot, the mayor sent it up. Now amendments are being made left and right by Ms. Prisley. I got a bunch of amendments. What happened to my major amendment for fifteen million? Can anybody else remember that through you, Madam Chair, to the clerk? Where is my major amendment?
I cannot answer that.
Huh?
I cannot answer that.
When you say answer, do you remember?
Yes.
I do too, I made it. It was for fifteen million for home improvement. Maybe the mayor told the city attorney to make it disappear like Casper, the friendly amended ghost. People coming left and right, they want torches, they want vinyl side, they want, um, roofs. They just put it in paperwork. That wasn't no real paperwork, the mayor said it wasn't gonna be no real paperwork and I'm with the mayor, he's picking me up, bringing me to work, and I'm riding in a police car because I'm scared. Somebody's beat Mays up, he can't get a ride in a police car. See the hump on my back? From being slammed to the ground by the city administration. Um, Mays got up and went and talked to Ms. Win Pricard. Did y'all see that, Mays got up and went and spoke to Ms. Win Pricard?
Alright, so, um, thank you, Ms. Prisley, and let's just remind our colleagues, so let's have a forum, we don't wanna block people, we wanna literally deal with the agenda at hand. We don't want to go there. So, um, we wanna go ahead and go on to anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round of this amended motion? Alright, so seeing that no one else wants to speak in the first round, I will go ahead, I will utilize my time to speak in the first round. Um, so we're looking at resolution three, um, three zero four with the amendments. I am looking at, yeah, I am in full agreement, I understand Ms. Prisley is saying that they asked for twenty-five dollars, so we should not be worth the fifty thousand and, and also according to, well, this is specific to Latinx, so I don't wanna waste my time talking about any other one. But yeah, so this is specific to Latinx, twenty, um, five thousand and they have paid for the wars three and five, so we wanna make sure that that's specific. Um, I have an, an, an issue, and I wanna be honest, uh, and we're gonna get to it in, in the next motion, but, um, yeah, we definitely have to do some serious voting down on some of these things here. Um, but yeah, so I'm voting for resolution two three zero three zero four with the amendment changes. It only makes sense, especially since we have in this specific area, um, one million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. We are not allocating that much, so we're gonna have a lot of money done over from this specific category. So, um, let's go ahead, vote these things up or down so we can see what's left over so we can put it where they need to go.
No, Madam Chair.
And so, um, I would like. What's your?
Um, request for amendment. Um, what was the amended motion?
The amended motion was to include wars three and five and then to change the, um, the award amount from, from fifty thousand to twenty-five dollars.
One of them.
What is your point, Mr. May?
There was two separate amended motions. One of them was to drop it from fifty thousand to twenty-five, that's the one we own now. The other, it had to do with people.
Um, let's be clear, it's not two separate amendments, Ms. Prisley. Oh, so, so you did? Okay, so we don't put those together? Okay, got it. So, so did you have a point one to point two? So, so, okay, so, so thank you, Mr. May, so, 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 Ms., um, not again. So, she amended her amendment. So I thought when you amended amendment, I thought you, you take the first amendment that you had and you add the second one to it. So, um, click down here.
Look it to you.
I will say this, if, if you approve the first one, it's not gonna be a point two because you, you're gonna vote to amend and then point two, you're not gonna want the point ones.
Okay, so, I, I'm just making sure that, that I'm clear. So, she amended to a point one and then from there, in the middle of that amendment, she put, she amended her amendment. So it's still a point one. Because what I just told by you all was that it's two separate amendments that were voted separately. I thought that you add it to that amendment and so we're gonna vote for the amendment, the amended amendment.
That would be my interpretation.
Okay, alright, so, so, so since you said that it's two separate amendments, I wanna be clear where we are right now. So, um, I thought we were, we had the motion for, for the amendment, to amend your amendment. And so, so since we are amending your amendment, we still keep what you said initially, your, your first amendment, so we still, we have that, right?
Yeah.
Well, I understand we have voted, I thought you added to it, so we can't vote.
Yeah, we vote right now on the water money from six to twenty-five thousand and if it passed then we'll go back to the original amendment program and then, um, we don't have to vote on the original motion, that's how that goes.
Okay, so right now we're only voting to add twenty-five thousand dollars.
Request for amendment.
Right now.
Request for amendment. So with the first amendment to include three, four, five, are we gonna vote on that next or does that all come under this one now?
She did that, this motion, yeah.
He said that, he said next. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so thank you for the clarity. Alright, so, um, so we have, so we're, so Ms. Win Pricard, and you heard the amendment is for, that's for the money portion. Okay, so, um, Ms. Prisley has voted, Ms. May has voted, and so, anyone else who'd like to speak in the first round? For the twenty-five thousand? Alright, saying none, um, anyone else who'd like to speak instead or for twenty-five thousand? Alright, yeah, so, um, there is, so Madam Chair, um, we're gonna roll call for the, um, amended, amended motion and this is, um, this is two three zero three, excuse me, two three zero three zero four point one, is it point one?
Point of order.
Yes.
Let's just vote on the second amendment and we know what it is, the clerk. We'll give you two, point one, point two, point three. This vote, okay.
Alright, so we wanna make sure, um, folks, we're back to that.
Yes.
Alright, alright, so we're gonna to vote on reducing the amount of Latinx in our tent. We're gonna vote to decrease the award from fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Ms. Prisley?
Yes.
Ms. Win Pricard?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Shet?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yeah, I'm staying until we get this total package together. I'm not against Latinx, but I'm not moving their money down. I'm moving it up, before it down, and I'm staying because this, uh, this is a match.
Ms. Wilson? Yes.
Yes.
For the six, yes, zero, no, one extension? For the six, yes, zero, no, one extension, so the amount for Latinx has been reduced to twenty-five thousand. So now we're going into our original, um, amendment. And this was to include wars three and five. We had, um, Ms. Prisley, she was the last to speak in the first round and, um, anyone else who'd like to speak? It looks like everyone else has voted besides me. Um, and I have nothing to add to that. So, um, we are in the second round.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point?
I'm gonna stay and then they will sit around and then amend it or anything to it, Madam Clerk, if you need to, the clerk.
Um, it's a test, so, so that's gonna be two rounds, five rounds?
Two rounds, then I won't speak.
So, um, Mr. May, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote in favor of change, even though we raised the issue on the change. My colleagues, they can do what they want, but some of this stuff, I'm not touching with a ten-foot pole. I call folks hypocrites and I don't wanna be one. Until we get this stuff together, until we have working sessions, I'm not adding or subtracting to that particular pot of money for Latinx. You know, I see the mayor playing politics with Thurston. I might make an exception and try to get Thurston two million versus one million, but, you know, I see what my colleagues do on battling when it comes to kids and Thurston and things for that nation. But I see the politics and the strategies being placed with this money. And I hear people saying one thing and doing something else and I'm not gonna be a part of it. So without favoring this point of the favor of the point of using all my time, I'll be abstaining and stating the reason why. Don't ever tell that I be hypocrite. Thank you so much.
Alright, anyone else who'd like to speak in the second round? Alright, saying none, who's going to vote? So, um, we are voting to amend, um, the resolution two three zero three zero four to, um, excuse me, two three zero three zero four point one and that is to amend it to include wars three and five and the amount to be reduced to twenty-five thousand. Alright, so roll call, Madam Clerk? Ms. Win Pricard?
No.
Yes. Ms. Shet?
Yes.
That's one of these letters. Mr. May?
I'm staying because until we get it together and I'm able to attach a new total budget, get this straight out with the swell member recommendation board, I'm staying for those reasons and I hope I, I might have got something else for those reasons, I'm staying.
Ms. Wilson? Yes. Ms. Prisley?
Yes.
Alright, yes, one, no, one extension? The vote is five, um, repeat again, five, one? Five, yes, one, no, one extension? Alright, five, yes, one, no, and one extension. So, um, so that resolution two three zero three zero four point one passes. Now, Madam Chair, what's your point?
That was the amendment, ma'am. I'm, I'm not mistaken, you still have to vote for the resolution that's been amended.
Alright, thank you, Mr. May.
Well, you're very welcome.
Alright, so, the, um, so the amendment passed, so now it's time to vote to move it into law. So, um, we're looking to move and approve two three zero three zero four point one. Roll, uh, Madam?
I'm sorry, there's no motion or the question.
You said there's no one?
No, we made the motion on.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Well, go ahead, yes.
I made the motion to approve, uh, two three zero three zero four point one.
Alright, vote on the board, so approve two three zero three zero four point one. Any support?
Support.
Alright, the movement is, um, properly settled. And any, any change to the amendment? Oh yeah, so any, um, discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah, my problem, Mr. May, I wanna make sure that I.
Request for amendment.
Yes.
Would that be a point one or a point two?
Point one.
We did two.
If, if I, um, we voted on amendments? Two amendments?
Yeah.
We gotta give it a number until the votes are ready, but all amendments in line, so it's a point one. Out there, Phil.
Alright, um, so we are, um, so, you second, you second, Mr. Murphy? Alright, so it's a pro, probably second, so any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Oh, so that's where we were, about any discussion, oh, Mr. May, so.
Still hold.
This is, um, so, Ms. Michael Clerk. Did we, oh, my record says that we already started this conversation before we had the amendment and we were in the first round and Eric and you spoke and that's when Julie.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What is your point?
This is a new motion to approve the amended motion that's been amended, Madam Chair. I'm on that.
Thank you.
I've been there here.
Alright, so go ahead, um, who would like to be the first speaker in the debate?
I'll try again.
Yeah, you go, Ms. Prisley.
Madam Chair, remember I was still holding on.
Go ahead, Ms. Prisley.
Madam Chair, really, I believe I should get a pass as I try to help this council and others. But I'm not, I get chest tired, dog tired, a tempted dog tired. But I'm not. I get chestnuts, dogged, a tempted dogged, talking nasty too. Now, this might pass, but when Latinx was here, I don't like them a hundred back. Now they done dropped it down to twenty-five for three wars. What Latinx gonna do with them three wars? They gonna get one of them sticks and pick up their paper. Maybe they gonna borrow somebody's eleven thousand dollar federal account.
Whoa.
And cut some grass. Maybe we'll have a Halloween party, give out candy, and celebrate it. I don't know what they gonna do specifically. And I don't know what they worked on in all three wars. I do know I'm not gonna commit to it. They can amend, suspend, or end any end they want. But until they get rid of this law, if we have a working session, where folks ain't trying to penalize people talking to your colleagues, but they whisper together and get scared when you say request information out loud, open and transparent. I've never seen that life. You're admonished and warned for trying to talk out loud. But they whisper and communicate among each other, 'cause attorney Kim is on record telling us they can deliberate outside of the council meeting. He told them they can deliberate when they get here, the votes are pretty much made. That's what state law say. Jack, guaranteed, section three, state law say you can't deliberate outside of the council meeting. This is the most ridiculous council out of Berkeley, out of the three. And they sassy. They sassy. That Jackie Allen Pauls proposed, and I would lay there and wait to see if somebody would attack. I had one stick, they just, I was like, they were making a promise something happened to me. And that's the word they use. They promise. They're wrong. So, you pray on, I pray on the witches, Jackie, but there's some nasty folk up here. There's some hypocrites up here. There's some unfair people up here when it comes to meeting out discipline. And some of them do the same thing. You see, Ms. Lewis on the discussion on the previous resolution or amendment, she told me I'm out of order when I do request information. I would tell her I didn't warn, and she did too. That's all a hypocrite. Now I'm watching it, getting together these resolutions, could have been the news to mob with their past. They ain't smart enough to call, they don't need to show up. Guess what the news gonna say? The mayor, hee. I'm gonna write it in the ground. That won't be the best y'all hear me talk about it. What's up Thurston? When they get to Thurston, you see how, you see how Ridgeway's like? Came over there and threw five, digging in the pot. And nearly hurried and threw another knee. Guess what councilman man told you? I'm gonna try to throw you two knee, or I'm gonna try to throw you three.
Might as well.
I'm just like the rest of them. Ridgeway told, Ridgeway told BB, five wasn't enough, that's for team. Zeeley can approve a dime, but have a shovel. And, uh, and now council person had a shovel.
Wow.
And guess who could show the first round? It wasn't the man with the hard hat.
Thank you, Ms. May.
I was just getting ready.
Any other, anyone else wish to speak at the first round? Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. Now, yes, I voted to, um, decrease the amount from fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand because that's what they asked for. Um, I voted no to add the other wards, um, the fifth and the third ward to it. I'm not quite sure, to, um, Madam Chair, to you, to, um, through you, to Mr. Murphy, where is the, um, Latinx? Is it in the fourth or the third?
It's in the third ward.
Okay, so, I voted no for that because I can't see where they're gonna be ordering the fifth ward clean. The, the boundaries for the fifth ward, um, they changed, okay? And so that's why I voted no. But, this is what I'm gonna do for this, um, resolution. Um, I wanted to see the, um, fifty thousand decrease to twenty-five thousand. That was important. But until we can have a, a working meeting, a meeting where we can come together and look at all of the, the operating money funds, and who, who, um, asked for, for monies, and, and, and who got money already approved, I'm gonna abstain my vote. Because, like I said before, I wanna see where money went. I like the residents. And I wanna, I wanna be able to put more money in the pot for the residents. So, I wanna, I wanna add up this money. I wanna subtract this money. I wanna see where the budget is as far as the operating funds. So, and people can go on Facebook and talk about me abstaining my vote, but you know what? I can either vote yes, I can vote no, or I can abstain. It's not saying that I will never vote yes. It's not saying that I don't agree with the different organizations that's, that's getting money. But, I want it to be fair. I really want this to be fair. So, with that, I'll be abstaining my vote.
Alright, so we have in the amend, in the vote of, um, amend, excuse me, approving, two-three-zero-three-zero-four-point-one, we have, Ms. May has voted, Ms. Carter, anyone else would like to speak in the first round?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Murphy?
Um, I have been abstaining because I do not believe in the twelve persons ad hoc amendment. This is the closest thing we have gotten to a working session, and we are doing the work here in, um, in person. And that is my issue. I believe we should not keep holding on to money. I think we need to be fair. And there's still money out there, we can still apply the programs. So we don't really have to, like, person, I believe it's gonna be added a million dollars, we have something from. So, I mean, when I'm looking at this, I do wanna start giving some money to these organizations' hands, because this is her residents. When they're calling Habitat Humanity, they may have put this two, then something three. And they don't know when they're gonna get the money. And they, I believe they're supposed to get it, when I called, uh, to check my office of residence, they said they may get it January, they may get it February. But I wanna start getting some money. When we do the work, like we're doing now, that's the difference. That's the difference. When we do the work, when we talk about it in an open session, not behind closed doors, and we do it out here for other, you know, residents. Now, the question is what they applied for, and then what they got. What they applied for is what they, I'm wondering why they're gonna get, which is what I'm seeing this trend to be. And I know there's some other programs that need amounts went up, other than what the recommendation was, or what their application actually said. And so I understand, you were saying, you know, give them what they want, and amend and that, take that money. And here's maybe, we take enough from one, give Good Church some money, uh, because they didn't apply for, uh, the amount. And so we have that money that's already, uh, that they budgeted out, the administration, but they can take money that left of money in front of someone. I don't like being piecemeal, and I do not have any expectations at this point, working with this administration, that we are gonna have a working session. I just abstain. I just do not see it. I mean, it has been, um, this mayor is difficult to deal with. And we keep, you know, we were fighting something that is, I mean, almost having a possibility. And it should be transparent. It should be, and, and it's not. But when we do the work, he wanted, he added the extra twenty-five thousand. Mayor Neely wanted the extra twenty-five thousand, it wasn't us. He did that. And this council vote say, we're gonna just pass that to take it away, and give what their application process is, and was. And that's the way it should be. Now, how do we get those other ones? Um, is Shelley Lee, I have wanted to know where the process, Mr. Edwards? Do you match it, Mr. Edwards? Where are we at in giving those five hundred and thirty-two, well, five hundred something forms, with getting those people put into the system? Because it seems to be, you know, when they're saying we're getting them, that they're not gonna be able to put up ahead, but they're not even in mind, those people have not even been called right up. And until they get called, here's my problem coming up with that. There were a total of six or, six or eight, eight forms that were held, and there was no consistency, because we really didn't know. But what those people did believe, believing, was that they would be contacted, and this administration did state that those people would be contacted about that money. So where are we at in the process of calling people about the forms?
It's my understanding, uh, from the chair to, um, Councilman Burns, is my understanding that that's the target. Um, that we've had staff making those contacts, staff that's under Shelley, um, responsible to her, that they have started making those contacts.
So like, you know, where, where are they at? Is it, uh, two hundred, three hundred, fifty, twenty-five, and we know? Maybe fifty percent of, seventy-five percent, is their number?
Not that I don't have that number, no.
Well, I know as these things come up, and like Councilman May has said, we can make recommendations to do things also. And council is really forgetting some of their, their power. Our vote is our power of vote. When we stick together to do things for the community. And some of these, and not all of these are bad, some of these that are put up, that they just put up, if they said, no, they not funding them, I'm not funding them. And I went through this sales sheet upside down and found one in there, was somebody who shouldn't even begin to die. And so, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Julie, what, did you see that one?
For which?
It was for the, the golfing? Okay, that's my time.
Alright, alright, we have, anyone else would like to speak in the first?
Madam Chair?
First round. Um, Ms. Shet?
Yes, I'd like to first, um, just thank my colleague, Ms. Jerry Winfrey Carter. Uh, I know you all saw, it seemed like a little trouble in her action, but what she did do when she came over here, was she apologized and helped me understand that her frustration had nothing to do with me, but everything to do with just really trying to figure out, one, um, the wards that are being served, whether it's the third, the fourth, or the fifth. And then just also making sure that they did have the capacity, because there was some apprehension the last time they were here, um, the money was added about, uh, the capacity. And so because of those two reasons, I can understand and respect her reasoning for wanting to send it back. So I will support her in that, and so again, I just appreciate her coming over here apologizing and explaining, you know, where she stands and why, so.
Anyone else would like to speak in the first round? Okay, saying that, um, we don't have anyone else, I will go ahead and utilize my time. Um, so, um, Councilman Priestley, so request for information. So, why did you add the fifth ward in here?
Because that's what the application said.
Okay, that, that's triple check.
Just saying, and I just wanted to have, one, what they applied for.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure that I heard, heard. Alright, um, so, we will go ahead and move on to the second round. Anyone do second round?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. May?
In all due respect of my colleagues, members, and members of the public, I've heard council people talking about leveraging dollars. But they have a political leverage that has to go on here. You gotta leverage the allocation of dollars. And the only way you can leverage the allocation of dollars, you have to show the folks downstairs. They can't piecemeal this together. That's what you got to leverage, your power, your vote. In all due respect, Ms. Burns, I just got a different political philosophy with you. This ain't what I call a working session. When you try to operate and allocate millions of dollars as a three-minute cruise, and the day of dying, and one, and throw you out.
Request for information.
What is your request?
Does the speaker know that I said this is the closest thing to a working session? I had stated it was a working session.
Oh, okay, so, it might be the closest thing to a working session, but we way off. If you have a working session, you gonna have councilmen here. The administration's gonna be sitting up here. You gonna have all the paperwork that Councilman May has requested, and you gonna go to work. It ain't gonna be no three-minute cruise, council people gonna be talking, and they're gonna be gonna do a rip the ticket when we get done, and we don't know what thirty to forty million is going. It might be ten million left over, but this show ain't close to a working session for many. At the end, them seven hundred voters gonna be happy. Because they ain't gonna read in the newspaper about Latinx. They ain't gonna read in the newspaper about a million dollars for Dr. Long, and they gonna read about seven hundred people who were first in line, getting ready to get served.
For you.
So you asking Mr. Edwards how many of them contacted? I remember saying send him a letter. Anybody remember me saying that?
Yeah.
You know what we used to call this in high school? They buffaloing, y'all. Once you start to get buffalo, you change your buck. Ms. Winfrey, gotta don't leave me as one of the last of the Mohegan. I don't wanna be one of the last of the Mohegan, 'cause I leveraged my vote. See, that's the leverage, when you make the head back. We should do this in a day or two. We don't have to wait to the mayor or the parliament, and the two members on the ad hoc committee that I appointed, they were new, Priestley and the day. It went to their head. They were supposed to call the meeting of the council and show up. They moved around buffaloing certain council members. Ms. Shet ain't been here but a minute, and she said she smiled at it. A bunch of them. Me, including in my opinion. Like I said, I've seen council people come and go. You fool around and mess these people around. You know, and Clint Politics, seven hundred people is a army. Zeeley only beat three, but about two hundred's old, out to shoot. And then Greece, and they have that press conference, and he should have been in the penitentiary with Greece. Can the Griezinger at press conference, he should have been in the penitentiary quickly interfering with an election. Whole in a press conference, Griezinger thought. She ain't say black folks and some folks don't remember Nashville for two days. I remember stuff for over five years, or longer. Jackie, you take care of your leaving. God bless you. I remember stuff for years. You can't buffalo me. And you can't pee on my head and tell me it's raining. They got the wrong one. Thank you so much.
Anyone else from the second round? Alright, so saying that, I'll go ahead and, um, and take my time. Yeah, so Latinx, what we have, so just to, to let you all know, the council, they were provided with an allocation sheet because the ad hoc committee been working to crunch the numbers and, and to make sure that everything was made plain. So on this neighborhood cleanup allocation sheet, that's what we're voting up and down. Um, and right now, we are on the Latinx portion. If, if you look, everyone, um, will see the Latinx portion. Um, on this neighborhood cleanup, wanna make sure that we are all on the same page. And this tells exactly, um, who applied for this category and who did not. But let's see, I'm, I'm reading this, I thought that I, I read something a little different. Let's see, it says, through the utilization of a specific rubric, rubric, six of the fifteen applications, as well as an additional recommendation for a ten thousand dollar. Alright, so, uh, I would like to have, uh, Ms. Sparks, please approach the later. Alright, so, I'm looking at it's part of resolution three oh four, but it's not part of, but it's not voting, we've been discussing. So I just wanna make sure that, um, I have my understanding of this. It says through the utilization of the rubric, six of the fifteen applications, as well as an additional recommendation of ten thousand dollars of, um, nine council wards, plus fifty thousand dollars for other wards. So, um, so I, so we are working with, with. So with that being said, I see on this sheet for neighborhood cleanup and white percent, I see the, um, one, two, three, four, five, six. So, why are the other nine not listed?
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
Why are the other nine organizations that apply in the category neighborhood cleanup, um, per the resolution staff review, why aren't they listed? Um, yeah, so why don't we have though?
We're good, okay, I apologize. Uh, three oh four?
Uh, yes, resolution three oh four.
Oh, no, I'm, 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 I'm going, this is, I mean, that's my problem.
Okay, it's fine, so, you know, I, I think I brought the confusion, so this is what happened. Um, based on all the information that you all provided of, the ad hoc committee, we tabulated everything, put it in nicely column. And so, but you all said that out of six out of fifteen applications, alright, six out of fifteen, so we do have six.
Okay.
So, where are the other nine?
Uh, they're not, I'm not sure, they not on the resolution, but you move it forward.
Okay, so, yeah.
These are resident, you tell the vision for us, so.
Point of information.
Hold on, Ms. Winfrey, go ahead.
Those are, um, I don't know, did you realize that if you looked at two, three, zero, three, one, zero?
One, three, one, two.
There are the last one now. That's why they're not, I don't know why Latinx said.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. The reason why Latinx was separated is because they, they're, they don't need a fiduciary. The other nine are under the fiduciary.
Okay, alright, so, alright, so thank you for bringing that up. So, Ms. Priestley, you said that is where the other, oh, nine?
Two, three, zero, three, one, zero.
Alright, two, three, zero, three, one, zero. And, what am I looking at?
The other nine organizations.
I'm, I'm trying to see, uh.
They're list, they're listed individually under that.
They're listed individually, so, so the missing nine, I can find the missing nine. Tell me where I can find the missing nine.
I don't think all of them are there.
That's my point.
Let me, wait a minute, I haven't looked. Yes, they're all there. The other ones are on the two, three, zero, three, one, zero.
Okay, so, so we said they approved six, and nine is not here.
Excuse me, the, the ones that are on the sheet are in resolution two three?
That's not what I'm asking you at all. I'm asking for where are the other nine organizations that apply per this summary? Because this is only half the story, this is who, who the mayor selected, who the community selected, who the community leadership selected. Who are everyone that applied?
Everyone that applied. They're not there on the Excel sheet, so we didn't apply it on here so that you could see that.
Okay, so, yeah, so that, so that's kind of important, and that's what, what we need to see. We need to see, again, everyone that applied, everyone that applied, we need to see that. So, um, so it looks like we just have to, I, you know, just, um, add to this, but we need to make sure that we have everyone in front of us so we can go through everyone equally. I don't wanna pick and choose favorites. Okay, um, and so, not the last person, thank you, Ms. Winfrey. So, since I am the last person to speak, we will go and go ahead and vote. So, roll call, Madam Park, we're doing a roll call vote to approve resolution, um, two, three, zero, three, oh, four point one. Roll call.
Ms. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Machado.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
I have to say, um, based on the fact that they will not be doing cleanups in the fifth ward.
Y'all.
Okay, five yes, zero, no, one extension.
Five, yes.
Five, again?
It's four.
Five yes, oh, no, one extension.
Alright, five yes, zero, no, one extension, resolution two, three, zero, three, oh, four point one, passing.
Madam Chair.
Um, Ms. Priestley?
I make a motion to send resolution two, three, zero, three, one, zero to finance.
Alright, here's a motion to send resolution two, three, zero, three, oh, one to finance. Is there any support?
Madam Chair, that's the big part number, three, one, zero.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, one.
Transfers the number.
Thank you, so two, three, zero, three, one, zero to finance, thank you. That motion has been made by Councilwoman Priestley, or is there any support? Support by Councilwoman Machado, so any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Uh, I heard, I heard, um, I, I'll go.
Because there's so much work to do on this resolution, I think it's better to do it in finance rather than tonight since it's already ten o'clock.
Alright, thank you, go ahead, Ms. Winfrey.
Um, you can, so Julie, you want to, I know you're removing stuff a lot out of here. And, um, I, you are removing, I want to probably the same ones that I was removing. Because that's what I think you're moving, I wanna go get it, get it done. But you said you wanna make it, are you making a amendment to move back to finance?
That was my motion.
That was your motion, yeah.
Hey, finally go, go to pause, I gotta dip.
I was gonna amend your amendment to go get it, you know.